We'll give you the price for it all, Christ name we pray.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's meeting is a work session, so we won't be voting on anything.
Hear the motion say.
We do need to get the budget settled if we can. We'll take it just line item by line item. Start out with revenue. Our business and privilege tax. We budgeted ninety thousand, payment at ninety four thousand, ninety one, ninety four. So, let's see where. We lack about four thousand ninety one dollars.
So that's like off the store.
That is.
Where does that?
That. Is that not Alabama Power, Carlin, T V A?
Uh, this is mostly from business license, I'm gonna pull this right here.
What I'm, what I'm wondering, have anything changed, you know? Anything coming in?
Um, we, we really wouldn't see it yet, probably take another month or so to show up. You're talking about part of his income?
Yeah, you know, have we had any, like new businesses? If this is driven by business?
We, we did have an insurance business come in, Crossroad Building. And, um, she's open, she's waiting on her sign to come in.
This is what my business licenses, uh, privilege taxes. It comes from Marion County Commission and, um, is divided out.
Or is this not also our?
It's the, um, the big check we get from Marion County Commission every year. Uh, this year it was eighty nine, six fifty six ninety.
So eighty nine of that was from, just from there?
Then it was in, um, August.
Okay.
So we're assuming we'll get anything wrong?
Normally we do, looks like last year, based on our budget, we had budgeted ninety thousand, so we were. So we don't look to cut that out? No, no, we should get the, continue to get that.
So we didn't get the five thousand off everything else?
Well, it's.
Well, that, that's everything.
But only pharmacy went up.
That's just a, a bribe, business privilege and it's, um.
That's not the new sales tax.
Yeah, it's like what is collected at Marion County Commission, they split it.
That wouldn't be much.
No, like three fifty, six fifty is normally what we get.
It's a percentage of the.
Except that one big one.
I don't want that percentage.
So really, I, I think probably staying at ninety thousand would be a good idea. Yeah, good for that.
Well, we budgeted ninety four, yeah?
We budgeted ninety and.
And ninety four, okay.
So, you know, that, that could vary a little bit either way.
That's just.
You know, right now, we have pretty good gear, but I think ninety would be safe budget. Uh, Clark, please.
That is Alabama Power, Northwest Alabama Gas and Hackover Water. Um, Alabama Power, of course, is, is done on now. That was two fifty a month, it was three thousand twenty two dollars, but you're, give or take a little. It will be gone next year, so it'll be Northwest Alabama Gas, which is fifteen hundred a month, and eleven seventy five a month for Hackover Water.
What's that totals times twelve, and that's what your budget's gonna be?
That's the, times twelve total.
What'd you get?
Eighteen thousand and fourteen one, and that would be, uh, thirty two one something, right?
Cigarette stamps, we budgeted six thousand.
Are we gonna do anything on the Clark thing?
Do you want to?
Yeah, we, we said thirty two one, yeah.
Just go ahead.
I mean, I thought we were gonna wait on that. Kinda sit it's there.
Cigarette stamps is where, um, they come in and buy the little rolls of stamps and they go out to the, the stores and put the little five cent stamp on, um, each packet of cigarettes.
It was probably down a little bit in the transition of, uh, in the grocery store. Cause they, they, it was a little while they couldn't sell them, they had to get their license.
It's like one, uh, row, uh, one row seven hundred sixty five dollars, so that looks about, you know, it's a little bit more than that, but.
I would say.
That's through September.
If you annualize that, it comes up seventy one, forty two.
So you can't annualize, well, you can't say that they're gonna do it by month or anything, you don't know when they're gonna come in.
Do you know what the previous year was? Were we right on target with that?
We're, we're close.
If you go off of that and you keep it flat, just keep it flat.
They, they were down a little while, I'd say during the transition. So I, I would say six thousand would be a good number.
We don't get one penny out of that, no.
Yes, we get a.
We make some off of the, the rolls that we sell.
Off the ones?
They, they pay.
Rolls and stickers that we get.
They pay more for the roll than we have to pay for.
It costs them more to purchase the.
Yes, that's required. The state requires it, but they, if you flip your cigarettes over and then dip your stickers on, and it's required.
Who gets all cigarette tax in our department?
I'm not sure who in the county gets.
I believe it's five departments. Plus their tax, they doing good, huh?
Not bad. All right, equipment sales and the police department.
It needs to be zero.
Well, we do have some stuff that we, we need to option off, that we never did last year.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't say that every year, it's cause you don't know how much it's gonna be.
Yeah, it'd be hard to say, eh?
Y'all have one of these in your packet, and this, this is to do with the police cars, and I wanted to, to show y'all. The initial sales that we did for the police cars was one sixty six, four twenty seven, forty six. We have, as of right now, paid off three cars, um, and the total we've paid is one forty two, three ninety five, fifteen. That leaves a balance of twenty four thousand thirty two dollars, thirty one cents to go on another, the last car. So, the last car payoff will be right around that thirty four, three ninety five. So, we need, if we're going by equipment sales only, we need ten thousand, three sixty two, eighty four, to be able to, but as I was talking to Darryl, if we want to use some of the, uh, uh, driving school money out of the court fund, which, um, we can, we could use that much and, and pay that last car off, and that'll be done.
My opinion is we go ahead and pay it off tomorrow, do away with interest and get it paid for. Cause it's just going up every, every day.
What was the total on all four of them cars? Cause I thought the sale of equipment would pay them all off.
Well, it was.
Cause we agreed on about twenty five, and they wound up costing forty five.
I think there was a.
We did, we knew there would be a little bit on the end, that.
Should've been ten thousand.
Interest differences, he thought, that the in, interest would be cut down or something if we paid off early, but that wasn't the case.
How much did we pay off? A hundred and eight thousand?
We paid one forty two, three ninety five, fifteen. That's through cars.
So we actually had twenty four thousand, though?
Right.
We had twenty four, ten, we didn't pay, pay that last one off.
Well, didn't. Did you not say that you made a, a payment on that before the grocery store deal, or did you ever do that?
I had made one, and they, I had overnotted the check. They say they never got it, someone signed for it, so I had to stop payment on it and reissue that check.
So did they get the other check?
Yes, they did.
How much was it for?
That was three, thirty four, three ninety five, that's what the, like, the third car payoff, just recently.
Orders one, two, and three are paid for.
We on ten thousand on number four?
We owe twenty four, we gotta put ten, three, sixty two with it, right?
The payoff on it's thirty four as well, but we've got twenty four left out of the equipment sales to go toward it.
Where's this money on equipment sales, city?
It's in, uh, equipment sales police.
Where at, where at in this budget?
Well, see, last year, that's what we talked about it, it didn't show up.
Cause it don't show up on it. But it, it didn't show up, so how can you say it's in here on it?
I didn't say it was in the budget this past time, you know, we talked about that, and it wasn't put on there. I think because our auditor had reclassed some of it, um, and it didn't show up in the, um, account where I paid it. So he reclassed some of it, and I, we missed it because of that, and anyway, that's how much money we've had in the sales.
So, let me understand something, the, this money, this thirty four thousand dollars, is sitting in an account? Is it in the general account, a police account, or where is it on this ledger, current?
It's sitting in that four twenty oh oh seven, it is not on the budget.
But it would've had to been as revenue to show up on your balance sheet every year. If you've got revenue coming in, it has to show on that as being received. Or that'll have to flag it with your auditors.
I had to go pull one from last year, but that, he knew about it, and he knows that's what we got left. I've talked with Dawn about it. And we had talked about that we didn't budget anything for it, again.
Well, this sheet right here that shows financial statement, and this is what most people looks at, and it shows that total amount, where is it at in this? As much as y'all wanna look at this.
It would still be in the general, um, fund.
So out of that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's in that general fund, thirty four thousand, three hundred ninety five of it.
Twenty four, twenty four oh thirty two.
Twenty four oh forty two is coming out of that, is what you're saying.
Yes, and it will be applied back to that sales, that's where Dawn had put it.
Now, we don't expect. We expect to get a large sum, I'd be this stuff we're gonna sell. The two cars and stuff flagged up over here on this wall over here? Oh, God. That's some of the equipment we got for sale. I don't think any of that. I hope we can't get rid of anything, y'all. Most everything is down if you don't. All right, we, we can come back to that, but let's go on through the budget.
But when you're, you can't, I don't know how you can say that you're gonna have revenue on equipment sale at least when you don't know the budget yet. I mean, you could show it as additional value.
Yeah, I mean.
Later on in the year, that would be actually above your budget, but there's no way to track a, a value on that, a potential revenue.
You know, potential, say that.
If we didn't think it was gonna be much, I'd just put zero.
Right.
And that'd just be added.
Cause right now, from last year, it's showing zero, we didn't sell anything. So, the sale of the stuff was two years ago.
Exactly.
So you didn't have any kind of budget there, so it's gotta stay zero.
It's gonna, it's gonna be smaller items, it's not gonna be anything like we, so.
Yeah, but it's still gonna be zero.
Yeah, that's.
And if you do increase the revenue, then that's plus. And that's where you're saying, cause you gotta budget off of what your current budget is, because if you look.
I just want each other to know where that was, because I knew that we had more money in that.
So it's gonna be a zero, you wanna say?
That is forty two, eight oh three, festival revenue.
That was, and, and that's another, uh, account, Darryl, that you and I talked about, some of these need to be combined. We have a festival revenue, and then we have a neighbor day revenue. That was actually, um, some donations that were made and put in that account. It was, um, a couple of donations, one was from the R C N D Council, and, um.
Yeah, I think we can put them all in one account, we just need to keep up with where the money comes in from.
And just call it festival revenue and not do the neighbor day revenue.
Well, we do not wanna keep up and say which one's doing better, and at some point in time, say one of them broke even, not one. Uh, if it, or one might make more money, you might wanna promote it more.
So one's coming from R C N D, and the other's coming from?
Well, that was just a couple of donations that was put into that account, R C N D and Ryan Clark.
One of them's basically the Fourth of July deal, the other one's.
You need to keep it fifteen hundred, because if they decide they don't wanna do it, then that's just money you're not counting, so. Keep it flat, so. Cause you can't, they might say they're not gonna donate.
And they, they're not doing that.
Yeah, but their donations are never guaranteed. All right, uh, forty two, nine oh one, franchise tax.
Now, that's the Alabama Power and Tom Bigby.
Right. It kinda fluctuates too.
And that's based on the amount of residents in the, in the usage. So if you get more people building, that usage would go up, and so right now, we're flat, assuming we keep it at sixty eight.
Yeah, we.
I mean, you don't see a lot of buildings putting in, unless you said that.
Valley lumber coming in will help, um, without that, I mean, it's fine, that's sixty eight, it's.
But they were partially in service during this year and before they shut down, wasn't it? Half a year?
Yeah. Probably not a half a year, but yeah, that'd be fine, we can go, same. Gasoline tax. Budgeted twelve, seven oh four, actual eleven, seven fifteen.
Yeah, fluctuates as well.
Yeah. Let's say budget twelve, five.
Gotta lower them rates down, get more, fill up, more supply and demand, you get more money. We can't go down this way. If you could. You know, remember, you, everybody built at the top of the mountain, cause it was ten cents cheaper, they didn't care to drive it for ten dollars. If you could give them, lower the price down, which generates more supply and demand.
Actually helped them keep the price lower.
That's right.
We, we stayed one penny above them, several people came to Hackaway to buy their gas, and they are reopening that.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, twelve, five, okay, here.
And you're gonna have to go lower than that, cause you didn't even make that, you only made eleven, seven.
Last year.
Well, last year was eleven thousand, seven hundred, so you were a thousand dollars below what your target was, and you need to drop it.
I, I'm talking about the year before, we were twelve, seven.
No, that's what you budgeted.
But we probably budgeted what we were the year before that.
Yeah.
So, uh, it don't matter to me. We can, we can budget twelve.
Well, the, is the eleven. Eleven, five is just through September, so you.
Yeah, but your gas tax is, stays consistent, and it's based on usage.
Man, you can annualize that, cause that's.
That's correct.
So it's gonna range above all that things, though?
No, you, you end the fiscal year September thirty first. So it's already, so that is a year going.
That's a, that's.
And so.
By last year's date.
Yeah, we're in the new fiscal year.
Budget eleven thousand, that's why you want me on.
The only way that'll increase is with, um, our governor increasing, did we get any of that at all, or is that strictly state?
On the gas tax?
Yeah, we'll get some.
So is this gonna increase this value? You know, because that's what you gotta look at, cause this, this gas tax that we got is for the city level, and then, of course, the state passed that five cent on that, and that comes into, has went into effect.
That's gonna be a whole separate, it has, it has to be a whole separate.
We had to set up a different account for gas.
We gotta have a whole project set up to even use it.
It must be by itself.
So we can't even use it on this one.
No, you have to.
Then we're gonna stay flat.
Yeah.
We'll have to.
The only thing that might change it is gas one of, cause we're running off of a percentage on it. Or do we, just do a pers, or percent?
It's percent.
Percent, that don't matter.
Yeah, it's just gonna be based on.
That's what they wanted, was a percentage.
If more people come up here and buy it, then that'll increase your revenue on it.
It's gonna sell more gas.
Yeah.
But it, I mean, that's fine, if y'all wanna do eleven. Eleven, five, that would be close to what.
Morning, when the budget board he brought in, that's why you a hundred and fifty thousand in the hole at the end of the year.
Eleven, five, we brought in eleven, seven.
I'm gonna say it, you need to.
That's the under.
So stay in the same, you know?
We all have a budget.
Eleven highs, yeah. And then we'll have to cut some areas, when you get into that expense, and determine how we resolve the budget. Cause your revenue's.
It's gonna fall some.
I don't see three thousand right now on three items.
Well, I'll just show eleven, five, I'll.
Yeah.
If you add it up, when you get to all my sheets, you'll see, it's probably.
All right, on the health tax, we budgeted ninety eight, five, actual one fifty two, and sixty, oh, forty six.
Why did it go up?
That was the hospital tax, that the, some of the towns sued.
And that's not where it goes up, it's gonna stay flat, isn't it?
Right, that, that's a one time.
So it was ninety eight, five is what we budgeted last year, so it'll be the same.
Is that lots of stuff?
Yeah, we, we got our.
We got forty two thousand.
Forty.
Forty two, I have twenty fourteen in it.
So we're, we're still need to, uh, I'm just, we spent that on my phone, but. Uh, I don't know exactly where we spent it, but. Came in.
What's next, housing authority?
Where, where, what do y'all wanna set that budget at?
What?
Cause ninety eight, five is still high.
Which one?
Health tax.
Health tax.
How is, would, that's what we said it last year.
I know, it's still about ten thousand over.
I think that number's going down, and we wouldn't have held worse than we thought we did. What was it here for?
It was probably around ninety eight, five, because that's what we budgeted, and it could, that too is gonna fluctuate.
Well, I thought you were just gonna leave it flat.
We, we can. We know we fell short there by ten thousand.
Pat, I don't know what you mean, you fell short ten thousand.
Forty, fifty, nine and fifty three, leaves eleven thousand, so.
Oh, cause you got that, yeah.
And I was, right there, eleven thousand, maybe money, we just don't.
Well, no, you're actually, if you hadn't got to fifty three, you'd be more than that, I would bet.
But I'm, I'm just saying, we're still ten thousand or eleven under.
So that means you need to put it, you're saying eight, ninety, eighty eight, or nine?
I would go down ninety, probably at least. Uh, housing authority, new taxes. Basically done about what we budgeted there. Interest on income. We got a little better than we budgeted, but we're basically right where we need to be. Insurance reimbursement.
That's, uh, a check we got from Millennium where I guess, which is our work comp, we got a, a refund back on it this time.
It's still, it's a zero?
Yeah. Hopefully it will, but. Motor vehicle registration.
That's a, uh, it's a little money we get every month from the state of Alabama. It's like five and six dollars a month. Goes back and forth, some months is a little bit more. I imagine it's all been used to being put in the vehicle sales use tax.
That's only a seven dollars, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing.
Leave it at zero.
Just leave it at zero.
Motor vehicle sales. Basically about what we budgeted. Neighbor day revenue.
I keep that around six thousand, if you don't know. That's gonna be based on any books you have.
Uh, Northwest Alabama Gas, which is our empty money, it is basically gonna be right there in that neighborhood. Police, fifteen, eighty, eighty. Carla, is that not where Fisher Gang reimbursed us for dollars?
That's gonna be zero?
That'll be a one time.
What about the other guy, we'll get him.
Not yet. Occupational tax income. Budgeted twenty five hundred, actual thirty two twenty three.
That's the employees' tax that's cut out of everybody's check.
Y'all wanna hold on that?
Yeah, we better.
Pool income. Budgeted forty two ninety one. Actual twenty five thirty seven sixty. We need to do better on that pool income. We're never gonna make any money, but. Say three thousand. I mean, we went. Went way over budget on that last year. But we should've been able to do three thousand. If you didn't hear, what do y'all think? You got twenty five hundred.
Do you do three or twenty five hundred, which one?
We're doing three.
You can't hear the tail, it's just a quarter.
Uh, park income, zero. Real estate, adware. We basically hit that pretty close. Rental income, administrative.
That's these rent.
Is that his rent and power bill, or is that gonna be just the rent?
It's just the rent right there.
So where's the power bill gonna be in, in this revenue?
I don't know, let's take this one.
Well, I mean, because you gotta add it in there too, so it's gotta be under rent, it's gotta be rental, because that's all in one bid. And you know that's gonna be consistent.
If we can, we'll never settle on power bill, but.
Why?
I've been waiting for that.
We did what we did. Do it, once we get over there, we said it would be never how much over that, the average, monthly average we done. We voted on and passed.
So he's still owes for the power bill.
But we do need to figure out what, what it's gonna run and just set it at a hard figure.
Then if you're just doing the rental income, you gotta multiply three hundred dollars whatever it was in his contract halfway. If that's that one, because the other rental would be the senior building, the recs and all that crap.
Now, are we going, I know that we coded everything that was over that. But what, like the.
Thirty six hundred.
The consignment sale was in there. The power bill's gonna be way higher than most that she's in there.
Well, we don't wanna cut her out there.
Power bill.
Well, there's something else on that we'll have to talk about here in a minute. When we get down to that.
Anyway, thirty six hundred dollars on rent.
Yeah. But what, what we agreed on, he would actually, you would take an average of the year. And whatever those are, and it's easy done, you just take the previous amount. And whatever that difference is, and he's gotta pay it.
That's what we did in the meeting, that's what it was, it was five thirty three.
So, let's say the power bill for the gym was twenty thousand dollars last year. And it increased to thirty thousand dollars. I mean, it's that one meter, it's all she's gotta do is pull that. And that's what he owes us, ten thousand dollars from January till May. It's still gotta be paid. And that's revenue too.
Wait a minute now, we wanna, we wanna look at everybody that's using that gym.
How you gonna do it, we said, we said this.
We can't charge him for somebody else's, we got the American Legion, we got donated their office.
Don, we had this conversation. We had this conversation that's.
I know we did, but you can't do that.
You can't too, you put it in the contract, you voted for it.
I didn't vote for it.
You need to.
Well, I'm voting against it.
Well, you're, you're voting against what you decided.
It ain't got nothing to do with honey, it's just got something to do.
It doesn't matter, don't you see, it's basically business in there.
You cannot charge him for somebody else's power bill, yours, you go up there as much as honey does. You oughta be paying this like he.
Don't point at me.
I didn't point at you.
That's included, let's, let's. Let's try it through the budget and then we'll come back.
I mean, that is a revenue and you've got to be fair to the community.
That is not a revenue for him to pay, he needs to pay his power bill, not yours.
We don't have a single power bill, we had this conversation, Don.
That, that, we don't add it to her.
We had this conversation, it's in the contract. It's signed, it's not me.
That right there.
Read your contract, it's signed.
I've read my contract.
Read the contract.
And I wanna be as fair as we can be with everybody.
It's not me, it's the contract.
I don't want to give you everything.
It's not me, once again, it's in the contract, Don.
You've got a key to the place, you go in there, anytime you want to turn the lights on and they leaving the lights on in the bathroom. And the hoodie's going through and turning them off.
I want, yeah, like your David, yes, if anyone voted me, I want, most of my memory, I don't know.
You pulled them in, you see it all, plus you pulling the cord and see it.
Well, you do pull them in.
You're in fact, I, I think that is gonna be a hard way to figure it, but we can go back.
We discussed that whole thing, how we were gonna do it. We asked, there's not two meters up there, what are you gonna do? Y'all made the proposal out there, not me. Because I said it was gonna be a problem from day one.
Well, it is.
Y'all the one that went in here, not me, and said he would do this on this if you let him in here.
You couldn't be, because you ain't here.
I did not vote for that.
No, you couldn't, as far as I'm saying, you ain't here much.
Oh, yeah.
Let's, let's get through the budget, try to, try to get this worked out. All right, uh, rental income for the recreation.
That's gonna be.
Pretty good year.
Actually, it's gonna go down with this, is it not, Carla?
I mean, it's shit, and we had eleven hundred this time, I don't know why it would go down.
Is that strictly out of the pool?
No, it's the gym. I guess, it's recreation.
Yeah, but most of the time the gym's getting used for, uh, nonprofit organizations and there's not a fee in there.
No, when, when individuals rent it, we charge them a hundred dollars, do we not?
The, the pool is fifty dollars and then twenty five.
The rec center.
The rec center's a hundred dollars.
So are these combined?
Um, yeah. We got the pool income up there, and that's just strictly the in, entry pay and the snacks they sell.
Let's just say seven fifty again, seems like that worked out. All right, rental income on the senior building.
I know we didn't budget it last year, but we broke it out to have the senior income for rentals. And then we've got a senior income that's just for the monies that they collect. Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays.
But right here on five oh eight, we got income for rental, right? Eleven fifty.
Yeah, that's how much we.
What do y'all wanna do here?
I'm trying to know about that too, because we don't know who's gonna rent it.
I'd put seven fifty or five, I was gonna try.
I'll, I'll see, seven fifty on it too.
Go over that safe.
Yeah. All right. Sales tax, we budgeted one hundred thousand. Came in at one oh five oh seven five three one. Pretty close, so. Over what we got. All right, senior center income. And that's probably what you were talking about a while ago.
Yeah, that's what they're, just the, um, monies that she collects, the days that they're open.
We, looks like we also budgeted there. Drop that down to a thousand. T V A, um, did we not move that up to the business privilege tax? Or is that something different?
That was, it's something that comes from Marion County Commission, it says T V A, it's not the same as the privilege.
No, because they don't know why it was T V A.
Yeah, and it's, it's just what they.
Is it not part of the B C D A?
I don't know.
That part? You know, the B C D A, you have so much, because we're tying in with that organization.
It may be, oh, I proceed on it as T V A, so that's a problem, what it is.
I'm not sure about that tag.
Does it stay the same?
Obviously, we got it last year because we budgeted for it, so. Thirty five hundred. All right, uh, transfer occupational, budgeted two eleven. It shows that actual is eighty, but it, it's more than that, it has not been. If you look in financial statement, there's still one forty three, two forty two in occupational.
I'll have a sheet too.
Forty three, fifty two, I was.
I didn't transfer at all because we wanted to hold it in that account.
So basically, with that eighty thousand. And the one forty three, we're, we're gonna be.
That's true, some of the problem where the revenues.
We take one thirty two.
Yeah, but how much do we normally take in on occupational is what that needs to be.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's what the budgeting has to be. Even though you're holding it in there, that's real.
The deposits, um, for this year was one eighty four seven sixty six.
It looks like between what we have not deposited and what we did is two twenty three, two forty two.
Um, of course, the beginning balance, there, there was a balance of thirty eight thousand in there.
But you can't count that beginning balance though.
I know, but I'm showing, I'm just showing you, there's a sheet in there, eighty four seven sixty six is what was taken in. Eighty thousand was the checks written. The ending balance as of nine thirty nineteen was one forty three, two forty two oh seven.
But is there not a, a document that shows that each month or whatever? How much is being put from occupational tax to budget off of that, and you use that number times it by the way, you know, if it's an average? And that way you can go off of it, because all you're doing is transferring endpoint funds to be able to use on that.
You know, we talked about having it.
You have to have that fund set up.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm, we're not talking about where it's at on this, we're talking about on your sheet. You're showing that you're getting revenue and that tells us your actual budget. Then how it comes up in these different ones is a rep, that's not what I'm saying. So if you're taking in occupational taxes of a hundred thousand dollars and that's what your budget's a hundred thousand. And then, of course, you're transferring out of that into these different funds, which is all right. So that's what I'm saying, this, what is that value? But that's what your budget's.
Are you saying, Carla, one eighty four seven sixty six was the total deposits for physical?
Deposits that went into the occupational tax fund.
Physical year of eighteen.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's what you had budgeted up then?
Yep.
So.
Do you think that value's gonna go up?
So we had budgeted two eleven.
So I think, man, they tell you that went down a minute ago, it's a waste of practice.
Do you think that value's gonna go up, or is it gonna stay that?
Well, I mean, it depends on how many we work, it's all based on jobs.
And the new jobs created and, um.
And all that money goes to school anyway, don't it?
And if we're gonna budget that amount, I need to transfer that amount, so it don't show like this. See, it looks like we don't have enough revenue because I didn't transfer the whole amount, the whole amount that was budgeted.
It, it, it's okay, it don't have to be done every time, it just needs to all be done by the end of the fiscal year. Where it can all be in that account. You know what I'm saying?
When you close out the year, your numbers might.
Yeah, we're. At the end of the fiscal year, that'll have to be zero.
Yeah, maybe, if you go with that account, then it's gonna all be the same.
Y'all told me not to transfer it, so.
Well.
I didn't want.
That's what we need to do next year to, uh, get, to make this work right here.
Yes.
So we actually are. We budgeted two eleven and we ended up at one eighty four. Seven sixty six.
About thirty thousand over, wasn't it, isn't it?
That didn't play, the, the thirty eight thousand that was at the end of eighteen, it wasn't transferred. That was still, that left, it wasn't transferred.
Yeah, and we probably budgeted on that.
Yeah.
Which we shouldn't have.
Yes.
So we really are not that sure, but it's gonna look like it, I don't think.
So based on our current business structure for its businesses in the area. They're staying flat, they're not increasing employment. We're not adding, so that's gotta stay at the one eighty eight or whatever.
They, they are adding some. And then value is trying to get started up, so.
Then you can increase it if you.
We can, but I, I would say, like, now that we've figured out. That we probably added thirty eight last year that didn't, or whatever how much it was, it wasn't.
Well, Ringer had a layoff, that, you know.
Yeah, but now they're working.
Now they're coming back, so they're just jumping around back and forth.
It's all a life. And it's been like that.
Right.
I'm sure you worked there, when I worked there.
Since I worked in the tree.
Yeah.
And the, and the truck plate staying consistent, every one of the other ones are, so is it wise to keep that around one nine?
I would, I would say, uh. Yeah, I think we'll probably do a little better outside one nine. All right, uh, transfer parking wreck. I'm, I'm not sure.
That is, um, we transferred. Eighty two ten thirty eight, for the capital for the lights for field two.
But that's not gonna be.
Gonna be a zero, well, no.
It'd still be a zero.
We need, are we doing anything in the gym?
You're gonna have to, and I don't know how bad it is.
Well, that's your playground equipment too, we discussed that on there. You know, we discussed playground equipment in that department.
Yeah.
If you wanna do this, you need to, whether we plan on getting a grant or whatever, you need to try to put that on. Then if you get a grant, you know, you bet much for good.
We have some money in the, uh. African prison, that we can do that.
Yeah, fifty five.
We could get a hundred, a thousand. We'd like to playground equipment, call, whether you just plan on finning that debt plus.
It's.
Well, I'm working with a company and he sent me about twenty different people that do grants for towns. And he said he would work with us, give us half off. But still picking out what we do and how far we wanna go.
Well, I don't say, what do you look at that?
If you upgrade the lights just in the gym to LEDs, you're looking at two hundred dollars a piece, and there's twenty. What I can, and there are twenty four lights, I think.
Forty eight hundred.
That, that's, I'm, I'm speculating that.
I'm gonna say.
The floor itself has got to be stripped and recoated.
I would say Barry Newlinney.
Yeah.
Hire him to do that, he'd probably do it for two thousand.
You know, the. Did we repair that water leak that was at the back that caused the damage to the floor? So, you know, there's some area in there, um.
And we fixed the leak going up.
And this is just my opinion, we get that floor fixed, I think tomorrow, if the consignment sale, it needs to be in the swimming pool building or somewhere else.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have to, uh.
She can put that in.
Track on all gyms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What does that money going for?
Her money?
Her money.
Well, she's supposed to be putting new doors up for one.
She's.
And I don't know how much tax money she made.
She told me that she has, um, Gerald looking into that, the doors, and he hasn't got to.
I don't know if she pays them a quarter, I don't know when she'll pay them.
And playground equipment is can vary.
You, you can go all the way.
It's been wherever you want, top out.
I mean, it's.
I mean, we could probably budget about twelve thousand.
Ten thousand, I think.
You're gonna spend probably to get that gym back up to code, it's not just that, the fire extinguisher's missing in the office. It's gone. It's gone, um, you may have to move that wall partially back because it's not within code. Cause he put it too close to the door, and I've got pictures of it, the drink machines, which is a egress access issue. Then the emergency exit lights have to be working in there, you know, when we first come back into office, we repaired all them, well, they went out again.
And they just need a bug?
I don't know, it may be the.
Even the light on the front, don't make more.
That's correct, some of them's got a trench mower in them, I ain't had time to go for a look at it, but, um, those items have to be up to code.
Budget ten for the gym, fifteen for playground equipment, twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, at least.
Ten, dude, or you need fifteen, cause she said we had fifty-five thousand, worst case scenario, we could get some.
Yeah, we, the only thing we like on the park is, um, let's just talk the park in general. Is we got the lights installed, we like seven lights, and they're supposed to be still stored in the shop out here. There's supposed to be seven out there, and I talked to, um, Pope, they're gonna try to get them before it starts raining, the rainy season in January. He's looking at his schedule to go in and get those installed in the outfield, that's all they like on that fourth project. And, and then to help on funding, if you're gonna have to pay it, if you can actually bring your, um, those workers in here like you did with the.
We can't from the county.
Okay.
Sure, cut it out.
Do you agree? Well, shoot. Because the fencing needs a, some dire need of being strapped back there, cause a lot of it's falling down, I mean, there is some work that's gotta be done.
You can get them work relief, you can pay them seven twenty-five, or minimum wage.
Okay, well, oh, no, you ain't even got a payback, so ten thousand.
The bathrooms, also.
Well, if you got a town supervisor, you can get them, it's not work relief.
The bathroom at the walking trail is terrible.
Well, we just spent.
Go back and look at it.
I know it is bad.
It's bad.
You talking about what?
Just go in there and look, so I'll let them see.
You can't keep people out of there.
What, but a camp road, or is that a problem?
We want a camp.
Can't tear it down.
You can't, I mean, it's, it's, it's bad.
You mean, what, the bathrooms, is that what you said?
I'm talking about at the walking trail now.
The bathroom?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I know, they're, they're pretty nice, they need to be.
We've redone them twice since we got here, and it's, it's a continuous problem.
We need to maybe go in and put some better, don't use them old Masonite, or not Masonite, that old pressboard type cans, cause it gets wet and runs. And then we had a water leak in there, you know, from last year that we had to repair, cause the water didn't get turned off. And then lights on the walking trail, they're several of them out again, that's gotta be upgraded. Um, I mean, there's just a lot of stuff that we've gotta maintain.
We'll put solar lights on there.
I'll put LED lights over there, too, that way you might have to change them, cause they're actually metal halide.
Put solar panels up, that way it don't have to come on, and go out everywhere.
Well, they're metal halide, and so you're having to change them more, is the problem.
People, people will knock them out, and then you're knocking out a more expensive lot.
Well, the, actually, the LEDs have gotten cheaper, that's why I say, when I went and done the cross comparison of the metal halide for those, there's only ten dollars in difference. And you plus reduce your power consumption by over half, and the life of them's longer, so.
I think.
They've come down tremendously.
We pay a flat rate on those, like, the same as we do the street lights.
Yeah, I'm talking about that, I'm talking about when they bust them out. You will not bust out an LED as easy as you will a metal halide, because it's glass, the metal halide is enclosed different. It's individually stripped, so.
It don't matter, we just need to replace them.
Right.
Whatever.
But there's, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that's gotta be repaired over there.
And we need to use this twenty-five million to do the capital improvement, and it needs to be used to repair our gym and the ball field.
Just budget.
Well, walking trail is used a lot by the.
And we'll get a grant when we lay the money in.
Yep.
If we got that spending, we still got the spending.
If you go over there in the afternoon, there's a lot of people that go to the rental, he does, he's over, usually in the morning, whatever, there's a lot of people with that walking trail. A lot of them now is going to the school because it's lit up better, and they walk from the football field around that hallway, and you're playing it back around, cause it's better lighting.
Good sidewalks.
Yeah.
If we got fifty-two, like, thirty-five, it's playing up.
And when we sealed that walking track, my seal was to use the pavement over the pavement, and they just use a paint, and it didn't have to hold up.
Looks like it hasn't been done.
Yeah.
Or it looks like it's been done ten years.
Yeah.
Let's figure out whatever value.
Still, I'm, still wanna do something at Wigginton, too, I mean, we won't, we won't do anything major, but at least swings and a slide or something.
Well, I saw something else, too. You got, uh, the pool, if you're gonna, if we're gonna continue maintaining the pool, which is a large, you know, we've talked about this, it is a large liability slash maintenance cost, but it is a benefit for the town after. It's gotta be repainted, plus, we've got that pipe that's busted on the back side, you know, you know, what Greg told you about, where it got busted the year before. That's underneath the concrete at the diving, the diving board, that, um.
It's been cracked for a long time.
That's correct, that's correct. So, I mean, there's, there's gonna be some additional.
How much do you say, we had a call of fifty-one?
Uh, City Capital, fifty-five, nine sixty-eight.
You on this budget forty thousand?
You still gotta have money, though.
Yeah, something could happen where we gotta have some of that money.
As, as money transferred from City Capital into General Five right later.
That, that counts, any kind of repairs in these buildings, everything, so you gotta look at where your major, major issues are. My box, the gym, is the first major, it's bad.
Let's say thirty thousand. And then we, we still run it up in there to be safe, we have the work.
So it's five for Wigginton, that's twenty-five right here, you'll probably listen to that, probably, that's like, oh, no.
All right. Thirty thousand from the park, which has probably never been done.
For real.
No.
But that's what you're letting people say, and then they still for the kids, and that'd be. Something for the kid, and then, like you said, that walking trail.
All right, Carla, seven, seventy-five, twenty-one, I'm not sure, transfer.
Seventy-five, twenty-one, that's where I closed out a couple of small accounts that was, um, owed after the tornado, and that's the, yeah, so.
That'll be, that'll be gone, won't it, or will it?
Yeah, I closed those out and just put it in the general fund. If I have any more to close, I don't know if they'll have any money in them or not, so.
Nine oh oh one, water morgue income.
Okay. That is where, um, the water morgue pays us for Jason and Doug's Aflac, and for their, um, Centos, their uniforms. And I made a note, Jason just came back to work in January, and he's had uniforms since then. It was the end of January, so it may as well say February until now, the Aflac, he has not had it all that long. So I figured for a full year for both of them, Aflac and Centos is around six thousand dollars that they'll owe us for that.
We're not just turning this over to them, drop it, put the offer, put Missaloo?
We're in the gym.
Put that on the water morgue.
They've gotta come through the town.
We paid the bill that they paid us for their park.
Yeah, they pay us back, and I'll pay them. They have to be their own separate entity.
Well, they own, aren't they?
I mean, they kinda are, if they're under the town.
We own the water morgue.
It's like five thousand here. And then I'll try to put it in there. And the mail pays whatever the bill is. We won't make any money, but we'll get reimbursed on it.
Seven fifty-three, six forty, I need to double check that now, somebody else needs to add it up.
I got seven fifty-seven, two forty.
Okay, let's go back to, I may have wrote something.
So would you, would you, I put five on the last one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll need to bring my calculator, I did.
The one you changed was thirty-one, one hundred, it was flat, thirty-two, thirty-two, one hundred, flat, zero, flat, flat, eleven, five, ninety thousand, flat, flat, flat. Flat, flat, that means it's saying the value, six thousand, flat, 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 three thousand, flat, 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 flat. Seven fifty, next was one hundred thousand, which is flat, one thousand, thirty-five hundred, one ninety thousand, thirty thousand, and then five thousand, is that what you got? Is that what's on the note?
What I've got, I, I didn't figure, what'd you get? Yeah, I got, I come up with seven fifty-seven, two forty, what'd you get?
Seven forty-three, six forty, I'm just gonna read it out, I haven't mentioned.
You mean, seven fifty-three?
Yeah, seven fifty-three. That's what I said, what I was reading after, did we all balance out?
Lose your weight.
I still got something on it, yeah. Seventy-five, three, six, forty. I want you in, I didn't.
She bought computer, looked down in her legs, I was pretty quick.
Was that six forty?
Yeah.
Twenty-three, come up with that.
Seven fifty-three, six forty.
Did you get the same one you did with that?
I got seven sixty-two.
Here, you'll see, see what you got there. See if we're all. What'd you get, do you have that?
Seven fifty-eight, four forty.
That's three different.
That's three different.
Shake, shake, see which one we got different right through here. Just wanna throw down, huh?
I got a teardrop on my calculator, must've been bad.
There may be one that you added that's a, should be a zero, cause there's a couple that we made zero.
We got the same.
Did you add, add the ones that were zeros, that should have been zeros?
What'd you get?
Make sure you don't add those, seventy-five, seventy-three, six forty.
Yeah, probably did add some that we were zeroing out.
Yeah, cause you gotta put the zeros on the side that we don't add.
You straighten them out, and if we can get Kevin here, we'll, right. We just now, we just got one calculator wrong.
And I quit myself at places, I'll be right.
I'm gonna go to my calculator.
You got one that does the, off that printout, isn't it? The paper, that way you don't miss lines.
Plugging behind the desk, I'm not gonna print it.
You give up?
Yeah, I got way too much.
You had a million something, wasn't that?
I got seven fifty-seven, two forty again, I don't know, she can go in there and tab, tabulate that thing.
Let's see which figures we got off.
Right there's what I've got.
Right there. Comparing names. Thirty-two.
We're not three or less percent.
One thousand.
Things are just very little. Well, that's a pain.
That's where you get it off, cause it's a zero. Yeah.
Thirty-six hundred is a zero.
Yeah. The rental income, y'all were gonna decide on that.
No, the rental income is.
Are you gonna keep it on there as thirty-six hundred, or, cause that was where we were arguing and you said to come back to it.
Yeah. That ain't including the power. Yeah, that's started bleeding the power.
And then we was gonna have to include the power and you told me to hold off not to put it on there.
You messed me up, I'm out.
Okay, so if that will, that will put it up there if we did that.
Thirty-six hundred is definitely the rent.
And then we put up the other.
That's what I said, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, and then add the thirty-six hundred to that.
Let's go, seven, five, three. Seven five seven, two forty.
That's what we got, we're balanced.
That's it.
Yeah.
Don't let it read this one. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, we balanced too. Our tabular did, it's seven five seven, two forty. Right, this is Friday. It is for me. I'm thirsty, man.
Is that a, a lunch?
Yeah, lunch.
We should really start the expense now.
About one page income, two pages of expense, we need that one though.
I added it on the calculator, then I did it in spreadsheet.
What, what was, I mean, we balanced out.
Seven fifty-seven, one forty, two forty.
Two forty.
Which was, within a month of all that. Yeah, what it was is, um, he said hold off and then I didn't write it down, cause I thought we was gonna come back and talk about it. All the rental income. Now here comes the fun part.
Yeah.
Look at what your budget is, and look how much you spent, that's what we gotta go in on, that's that, yeah.
Keep it positive.
Yeah, we'll just keep it positive. But we had a lot of repairs.
But I'm gonna get going, I did. Start out, dues, subscriptions, administrative, administrative.
What?
Dues.
Now, this is where someone first laid you missed.
I'm sorry, too long, man.
We're gonna have more on that, are we not, because of the audit or whatever, is that gonna show up underneath that?
We're paid for audit.
No, I'm talking about the expense that we had to pay for, for lawyers for all this ordeal in the market. Does that go under that, Carla? Under accounting?
It will.
Auditing, all that. So how much are we gonna have there?
Uh, with the meeting.
We do legal fees, we've got legal fees down there too, we can use for that.
Cause that value's gonna be large, is it not?
That what?
That value's gonna be like five or ten thousand dollars, wouldn't they, didn't they charge you?
Somewhere in between there.
Down that deal that you're trying to say, and I'm still trying to hash it out. We gotta add that in there.
All right, accounting, auditing. We budgeted thirteen, two seventy-nine, actual nine, seven, three nine.
Is that gonna go up or stay the same? We got any additional audits going on that, other than our accounting audits?
No. The only other issue in accounting will be the attorney fees on that deal.
Cause she's gonna put it under legal fees?
Yeah, there's a legal fees, um, account, I bet we need to keep it in my head. Accounting and auditing is just like Bry does and Don Wallace.
Uh. We're, we're still thinking on.
Ten. We only spent nine, we budgeted thirteen, so you think we gonna go over ten thousand? Shouldn't.
Shouldn't, maybe not, hopefully not, but, so ten-five anyway, give ourselves a little bit of.
Yeah, if we go over, or, or seven fifty-seven, we're gonna have to cut somewhere, remember that?
But, but it was the reason we have that budget in hand. Cigarette stamps were.
We closed on that anyway.
Yeah.
That was just like one order, that's why I was saying, I paid four thirty-six for one order of, of lots of like twelve, fifteen rolls, I get seven thirty-six.
So if it goes up, we're gonna go up on the income too.
As late as we can let them buy, three months of legal money.
So you keep it at four fifty?
Yes. What your order is that, that's gonna show up on here. Next, dues, subscriptions, administrative. Budgeted seventy-eight twenty, actual eighty forty-six.
What subscriptions are we paying, is that for computers and, or what?
No, what we've got, NA cog is fifty-three fifty, I think it's stayed the same this year, I'm not sure.
It went up last year, didn't it?
It clearly goes up every year.
Fifty-three fifty is what it's staying at.
Really got much of a choice.
And we have one personal concepts, we're all with the posters and stuff.
You got, by that. Uh, say eight thousand. Dues, subscriptions, police department.
Maybe I found.
Budgeted four fifty-nine, actual sixteen hundred. Why are they out of work, same day?
Is there a, you know, when we get finished with this, is there a way that we can see which department caused us to be over budget this year?
I don't know which department, yeah.
Street department?
By far.
Okay.
No doubt about it, we bought a muller.
Don? That's your department, you spent a lot of money last year.
Well, Dallas buying too much stuff, we wanted to quit that.
We had to have it or we wouldn't have.
It's a post-staff, um.
I get fifteen hundred.
One raise it probably went up, cause we hired like four police officers, so that's four times what we budgeted. Because you had Tyler, and you had the other one hired, and we, and we had three hired, we had, you probably had paid these on them, but you had eight. I'm just talking about whatever fee, it wasn't eighteen thousand, obviously, it's something small, something other.
We had Adam, Boyan.
So we had, yeah, we probably had six or seven difference.
With three guys we brought in different, for four times.
Lee, he was on the previous year.
Yeah.
Probably got more stuff to do, it's where we had more.
No, I was talking about the little.
No, let's do, let's go.
All right, listen to them.
Yeah, I need to come home, but.
Sort of order.
They don't know.
Fifteen hundred.
But I, I need to be with the family.
Equipment, administration.
Uh, we approved a printer being bought, how much was it? Is that going under that?
Um, no, let's see.
Or is that going under office supplies?
Probably put it under office supplies, it was like thirty-five hundred.
So equipment admin would be zero?
Budgeted four thousand and one hundred. So we're on zero, is that right?
Equipment recreation, that's where you give a donation to the Dixie use.
For five hundred.
And usually we do a five hundred for each one of them, ain't it?
Yeah, if they ask.
Yeah.
We did one this year.
Right.
Only one coming, I asked, they're ready, I said they had enough. Leave it at a thousand. Equipment, street.
Don?
Don budgeted.
You didn't get no money this year.
Actual forty thousand, eight seventy-five.
Oh, it's more than that.
What do, what have we got, well, this is the equipment. What's, what do we got in here?
Thirty-two thousand was line equipment.
That count.
And then a lawnmower.
And a lawnmower.
Got a lawnmower on this one, cause that, that was, the lawnmower in the back, it was probably more than that.
It was eighty-eight ninety-five.
It was king and so did the lawnmower, was it?
Nine, so both of them are in that.
But we shouldn't have to buy that this year, so it should be minimal about of equipment.
No, that's a good idea, yes.
Might, you know, some, is the bushhogs all right?
They've got, well, ev- every year you've gotta get them back up.
Yeah, but that, you're not having, you're not having to go buy any of them, we're talking about new purchases.
Probably look at it. Twenty-five hundred, three thousand, maybe at the most to get them back.
That would be repairs though, that's not under equipment.
Right, that's right.
That, so. You wanna keep it six thousand?
Probably even, yeah, we'll do that, six thousand. Equipment, police department.
That's gonna go up. You authorize, we authorized, uh, bass and some other stuff.
You remember the total?
Jeremy gave me a, got a check. Um, he's got twenty-one sixty-four on here.
For equipment.
But that's overall though, is it broke out into, is there any other ones broke out into this? I thought there was another one sitting there. Is that part of his office supplies for the police department? Is it counting all the?
He's got, um, twenty thou, uh, twenty-one sixty-four oh four on equipment police, and that's what this one is.
What's his total budget?
Total budget. Uh. He's got, what is the year to date? One sixty-four, three fifty, seventy-eight.
So it's his salaries and everything, and, but, I wonder.
No, they ain't right, they can't be, he got that right.
I wonder if he had it.
Because when we, when we first budgeted that, you remember it was around two hundred and twenty something thousand dollars.
Yeah, but he may not.
You raised more than, and that was when we had that big conversation about, and that was equal, that's right.
He has Polish. He may not have budgeted that fifth officer in there though.
Yeah, but you're having to do all the overtime, it's still the same, cause you're doing average, almost like twenty-four seven, we already went through this.
You're not doing a whole lot of overtime.
Right, but, but if you're covering twenty-four seven, that's what it's gonna cost, cause it's true this.
You have to find one of these in your patent.
Because he pretty much stayed flat with his, uh, he wouldn't know we're budgeting on his on his labor, he was right on.
Well, that was just a joke today.
Yeah, this don't have all the expenses they seen, this has not got all the tires, cause you know, they're buying tires left and right, and it was, what was it about, what'd he tell us?
He don't have his budget anyway, he's just got an example of what.
No.
This is just a.
He's just got, that's not, yeah, and he's not got it out to all the police officers on their salaries, and, cause that ain't right. Cause we gave him a raise also last year, went up to a dollar, which we didn't count for that in the previous budget, which means it has to go up, so you have to calculate that value back up.
I'm waiting to land that fifth officer back in or take it away.
Well, what, it doesn't matter about that, what you're looking at is.
Yeah, if you're budgeting it though.
Hold on, we went through this conversation two years ago, twenty-four seven covers costs you X amount of money, it doesn't matter if you have five officers, six officers, whatever, it's gonna cost you this amount of money. And I had that analogy for overtime versus all of that, and it was all totaled up, and if you add that, that's your O and M for your labor. Now your tires and all that, because we got these police cars, he told you, I don't remember what that value was there.
That's not.
What was it, about five hundred dollars for, a used for tires for, per vehicle?
But that, that's not necessarily right on labor, cause if he can get part-time help.
That's correct, and we calculated that to, yeah.
What we can do is figure out the budget and let him figure out the labor.
And that way he saves us, cause you do it as the, and we already done that, and it should've been consistent showing it.
I mean, he, he's got it down as close as he can get it. Alright, so, police equipment. We know what we authorized two meetings ago. Just put thirty thousand. What we authorized plus of that, did we not, it sounded was Kenny something, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was like twenty-four hundred or something like that. I had to go pull them up meetings in like minutes, so.
So he, he's gonna use that right off the bat.
Yeah.
Is that thirty-five hundred? That's probably. We can fail.
So I only can get up, hit the button.
Alright, equipment for the senior's center.
And we had to buy freezer, um, for their, um, for their meals.
Say a hundred dollars.
Good, and that's the first time we've had to buy any of them.
They don't like putting much into that at all. Um, equipment repairs, administrative. Budgeted two fifteen, we didn't have to pay for anything, I know Chris, they've come to work for them lots.
Well, you got some other stuff over here, and it's under miscellaneous, that's what I was looking at.
It could be.
There's one, it's called miscellaneous expense, and it was ten thousand dollars in that, so some of it could be falling under this miscellaneous expense.
Two hundred and fifteen dollars?
Moments is what I usually put Chris fixing the lights or whatever.
Two fifteen. With the repair, street department. Uh.
We paid David Elrod eight hundred and fifty dollars, um, brown equipment, two thousand nine ninety-four fifty-five. Let's see.
But we know we had some iron.
Yeah, before your tractor, span hardware, it's just some different.
Stuff we had to work on. We should not, we should not have that this year, not gonna win. Uh. Eighty dollars, that's a lot of work on the line.
Yeah, we need enough for breakdowns.
That's not the breakdowns, it's in, it's in another category over there. We've got two categories, we may need to combine some of this.
So you could. That's what I tell Carl, like, maintenance and repairs all been same.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it shouldn't be, then you add enough to, for you.
So you got in the others.
Flat tires and something breaking down.
Well, you got some over, it says vehicle repairs, police vehicle repairs, street, there's, there's so many different counts.
Yeah, repairs and maintenance should be combined on all of it.
Yeah.
Um. I guess, you know, zero that out.
Yeah.
And put everything under maintenance.
Yeah, would be.
Equipment repairs, police department, two ninety, actual zero, it needs to be zeroed out.
It needs to be zeroed out.
Carly, can you make a note to combine the repairs and the maintenance?
Yep.
Yeah, so, administration. Budgeted eleven five oh five, actual ten five.
Netflix.
What all, what all were we considering administrative here? The town coroner will have some. Thank, the NACOG van.
No, they're separate, if you read down through it. That fall under the senior building, the police department, so. That's gotta be your diesel fuel, ain't it?
Diesel.
Yeah, that's ten thousand dollars.
Administrative, it'll have.
I know, but you don't.
Fire department.
No, the fire department's got their own too. We spent ten thousand dollars in gas, oil administrator, and the other departments didn't spend. Much.
We shouldn't have much gas and oil on this one.
On the administrative, let's see, it's like.
Now, that could be falling under your police department that does not have wax cars in them, that, there's one out there and they're buying gas, it's.
Yeah, it's out in the southern, it's got nothing on it here.
The local, and putting it down.
It's still, actually we have our police department though, and they, it shouldn't be that much.
Shouldn't be nothing purchased a day on a car repair.
Yeah, if they don't know how to use it, you need to see it.
Well, I mean, should nobody.
My doc don't have one for the NACOG van.
Well, they'd get one and put in there. Helps personally go into that, where you can track. So, the way the state is, the state's in there, everybody's got a separate thing, nobody uses the same car. Regardless, and that cuts out all that miscellaneous spending that you don't know who bought it and why it bought it.
Y'all would've been filling up your own vehicle, y'all would have to do that.
I wished I had been, looked like somebody been filling it up ten thousand dollars.
I think. Police.
I don't know.
Should be more than that, because.
So, that needs to be figured out.
I don't know why we.
These five, fives gotta be fixed.
Why, why would?
Before you can actually say what that value is.
We have budgeted ten thousand five sixty-four on that anyway.
You budgeted eleven five oh five.
We didn't budget, we budgeted eleven thousand.
Or eleven five oh five, man.
Yeah.
You just spent five, ten five sixty-four.
Right.
But there was ten thousand spent, ten thousand five sixty-four.
Yeah. But we, we budgeted eleven five for some reason.
Yep.
When did we get the cards? Last year?
Yeah.
Did we budget, did we do this prior to getting them cards, or not watch it spin, or?
Uh.
Unless Steve, you think all that would've been in one?
But we didn't go through and stick tail about what we're doing it.
No, we didn't.
We said, fly it, fly it, go, last year.
Yeah, we did. It was our first time, we just wanted to get a budget from.
It was our second time, but the first time you really, you're taking a guess on.
Second time.
It looks like the admin's got more in it than it should, because of the, it's got some atoms on here and.
Boy, I wouldn't think that should be over. Twelve hundred.
Oh, it's, you wouldn't think so, because somehow it got coded, it would've had to been put in the, should've went these other accounts. Unless it's diesel, now, if you buy diesel, those accounts are going in.
It should be administration.
I understand, but that may be why people do it in the past, I don't know that.
It should.
It's always.
Yeah.
Because it has to be ordered, it's not on a wax card, it's actually brought out in the tank truck.
Well, I was thinking, we stay on diesel with your problem.
Still should be charged to the, the street department.
Then that means these categories right here is gonna have to be readjusted.
I'll just have to go through one. Thought that would. Point is, be there.
Far to far, we don't feel just completely get rid of that, I think it's, you know, like. Alright, what, what do y'all say here?
You're gonna have to fix all those before you can determine, 'cause they're not in the right codes.
Yeah, probably we, we know, i- if gas and oil administrative.
But you. But you still gotta fix them before you approve last year's financial.
We've finished something. Well, we're not approving it, we're setting next year's budget on.
Yes, I understand it, but you also gotta fix this to approve next year's too, 'cause we have to sign off on all this too.
Yeah, we'll approve it tonight.
No, that's something I'm saying, I'm talking about wife having to maybe fix that, 'cause unless she go in there and figure out when we're gonna be here midnight, on what these accounts are.
So, you wanna skip them?
We, she's right, we gotta find out what.
'Cause see, gas, gas and oil and street is next, and this only four thousand. No, and then it's up thirty thousand.
Well, I was gonna say, we skip all the gas and oil, 'cause we don't know, something's not right in that, in those.
Okay. Alright, so, let's pick up on five one.
'Cause who is your number one user of gas? Your police department?
Police.
Yeah.
And you would think that your police department should be around.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand dollars or more, right now, they're the lowest department, might as well, I'm talking with when the street department and that.
Alright. Alright. So, we will skip down to fifty-one six hundred.
So, we're skipping fifty-one four oh one.
Yes.
Down to fifty-one six hundred.
Yeah.
We're gonna investigate that, see what's.
I'll just go through, pull all of them, and.
See if we can get one of them.
Mandy is, and I both making sure we're getting everything in the right place.
Alright, uh, five one six hundred, insurance, water department.
Um, that's just where, um. The insurance that they paid us on. What is this location? We had budgeted twenty-six fifty, but they have, we have not, they have not paid us for.
You've got it on here twice. Look at twenty-one six oh four dash oh four. Insurance for water, insurance for water, it's, it's spelled wrong, and it's a duplicate.
Where are you?
It's two fifty-six hundred six oh four.
Two nail.
So, under that general.
There was a typo there.
Insurance water.
Go down one more, there you go.
That is something else, though.
Yep.
It's something else.
They.
It's one of them helps, it's one of their liability.
They should have, I guess we should have put it into the five one six oh four, I g- I'm not sure, but, uh, that five one six. The five one six oh four, oh four, yes.
We gotta have a book.
You gotta keep it in there.
Uh, hey, insurance, it's their part of that.
How many different ones would they have, regular insurance and the group?
Um.
That you, 'cause you got, we've got a insurance water, and it's some kind of other, I don't know what that word is, something water.
I don't know, why that, I mean, that must've been set up.
Yeah, I mean.
And then you've got insurance group water.
Insurance group is our, um, health insurance. General is like, um. Our equipment, insurance on all of the buildings and things like that.
No, I'm just talking strictly water, good water part.
And the, the, the water.
You've got three different ones on there.
You got two waters and one group water.
Yeah. Fifty-seven oh one, yeah.
Insurance group is the, um, health insurance.
So, is it, did they have like some kind of one-offs for Aflac or life insurance that's separate from the group? Is there sing- I, you know, I don't know.
Aflac was on the.
I'm assuming the Aflac is on the, that.
It's with the group.
'Cause they pay, pay us for it. I was trying to figure out what that, why that account is in there.
Yeah, it's the full one, yeah, checking through. Real order for. Just check, check the insurance card.
Because the, because that is not, um.
So, all those are to be skipped.
And all three of them together.
Well, the insurance on the five six four oh four, that's the halable insurance that part that they, that we pay for that, and they.
Play it off.
They don't pay us back for it, is what I'm trying to get at.
And both of them together comes up to about fifteen thousand.
Are you referring, hold on, go back to that, did you say the fifty-one what?
Five one six oh one oh one, no, I'm sorry, the oh four.
Yeah.
Where we budgeted the twenty-nine thirteen.
Well, that was actual spent, there was nothing budgeted, and that, that makes it look like it's a typo there or something.
Right.
I'm sorry, I, I just did, but it's where we started breaking out. Our buildings and our vehicles and things like that, y'all wanted it broke out, so that's where that come in.
What?
Um.
So, the insurance water.
The insurance billing from halable insurance.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know the conversation about when it broke out, I thought all that fell under general, under general.
Well, we broke it out between the water and the police and the street and the rec. That's what I thought y'all wanted it done.
So, each one of these is insurance on those departments?
Yes.
Let's, let's come back to these, and like, Carl.
'Cause before they wouldn't broke out like this, like you're, they were all in one, so I do got a question though, since you have broke it out, this general add, it's forty-four thousand dollars.
They weren't. Okay.
Is that, what is that?
Okay, um, that is our part of the halable insurance, that's the town's part, or the administrative part. And also, it's the work comp payment.
Okay.
Twenty-three thousand five eighty-eight. And then there was, um, yeah, it's the halable insurance and the, and the work comp.
Have, has. Is Mike came back and done an assessment with all the s- things that were, needed to be added? Like, for example, the sewage plant was not on there.
He's working on that, he's working on that.
Yeah.
And then did he take the market off?
Yeah, he's took the market off.
And then, um.
No, there, there's some small things that didn't work out.
Small things that's gotta be added, so that value's gonna go up.
Add and take off.
Or take away, okay.
In that five one six oh oh, I mean, we had budgeted twenty-six fifty. And we didn't budget for it broken out here for the five six four, five one six oh four. And it should've went, that's got to be com- you know, one amount, um, goes against the other.
So, why has come back to this, is it worth it?
I mean, no, I mean, because I can do away with that five one six oh oh insurance water there, and we can change the budgeted amount of last year, twenty-six fifty. And then we spent twenty-nine thirteen. You see what I mean? I can just switch that up and, and change that. And that would be, the twenty-nine thirteen is the water's part of the building vehicles that belongs to them.
Okay.
That we pay.
And then the insurance group water, that's gonna be their health insurance, correct?
Right. Yeah.
Do they reimburse us for that, or?
No. I think the reason that never has been done is because of the, we don't pay water bill.
Yeah, we usually be annoyed with that, but.
So, I guess they push it down.
There's a lot of water, yeah, yeah.
Basically, we're spending a hundred thousand dollars in insurance. If you look at all those numbers. Am I not right? And that, those values, based on, let me go back one memory, um, we had a to-do list in that book when Mike comes in and does an audit. And that changes your insurance ratings where they'll drop. So, since we've added our handbook and all these other things that we added, and these policies and everything, will they reevaluate for these numbers to drop now? Have you talked to him about that? Remember they came in and done that assessment?
Yeah.
Kenny had that book before he retired, and we had to check all that stuff off.
Yeah, they, they have some, but he probably needs to come back and do it again.
And that way we can drop, because we've improved our policies. Okay.
Okay, so, I'm gonna do five one six oh oh dash oh oh, I'm gonna put it to zero. I'm gonna put that twenty-six fifty down on five one six oh four oh four.
Why don't you combine them and do away with it?
That's what I'm, I'm gonna do away with, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
And then, they, actual year-to-date is twenty-nine thirteen, so that's gonna be around three hundred dollars.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, um, you can set your budget on the value.
Three thousand.
Yeah.
But you gotta do the insurance general admin too, so.
Is there gonna be any increases?
Hundred sixteen thousand.
Um, do you, do you, do you think they're gonna increase to a three percent increase on each one of those?
Yeah.
Is that what the average is, or what are you thinking right now? And that way you just keep it flat on what the actual is, do a three percent escalation rate, and that's your budget for the insurance.
I don't. I don't.
I don't have insurance, I don't know.
Our insurance is going up four percent.
Four, so we'll go four percent, and that way make that your budget.
Yeah.
And that way we don't have to go through everyone in lineups. And that's your value, because it's, you can't control that. The only thing you can, only way you can reduce those values by not having a lot of work in Scott, but, flames, and that value's coming down.
I mean, yeah, so that's why we got that little check back, which was good.
Right, right.
So, you can say a hundred and twenty thousand? Well, they will, I'm sure.
Okay, on the. Go back, I know that was the, the group. And you wanna do the general. About the same as it was, or what was y'all gonna do on that?
About on all that, totaling all that, and adding four percent. From mine.
Five one six oh one.
Six oh one.
Six oh seven.
Seven oh six. Seven oh seven.
Seven oh five.
So, the year-to-date actual is what we're gonna put it, put down for the next time. Plus four percent.
Plus four percent, that's correct.
Yeah, we definitely need to work on getting insurance done.
Yep.
Tell me about it.
Well, one good thing is, by having a, a, our, believe it or not, when we increased our value on our fire department, we went from being a nine to down to a six, I think we're six now.
Oh, yeah.
So, it was worse than this about five years ago for the homeowners and for the town.
But health insurance is still, oh, there you go.
Yeah, I mean.
And I know y'all said last year something about on mine, since I have family, family coverage, I can't do away with my family coverage, because it has dental in it. I might could try to find something that would be. It don't matter. I'm gonna have a paper, we're hitting it.
Hopefully don't miss Matt Dylan.
Chose on it, damn, we don't want to pay it.
Let's move on.
By the camp law.
Well.
Jail expense, we budgeted twelve hundred. At zero. Just took them away to jail.
That's if you take them to jail, you have to lay them overnight or anything like that and you have to pay them, so.
Actually, well.
What about the lake farm down there?
Yeah, I think it's well, it's somewhere near. We'll try to, try to. Well.
Keep it flat?
Yeah.
Landfill figures going up. You know how much they're going up?
I hope they do.
I don't know, but you, if you, as you can see, we've spent more than we budgeted last year.
Yeah.
Sure how much it's gonna done all of this.
Four percent.
Um. I don't know if they've even notified us of that.
They haven't told us there.
And three thousand?
Mm-hmm. And here are the legal things that's what we're gonna spend.
That's why I had to increase to ten thousand dollars, right? We spent five thousand already this year and then we got that additional five to ten thousand dollars. That's Tony Glenn's fees. His lawyer.
Well, we had to, um, we had to pay Tony thirty two hundred on the grocery store, he had to get extras, so.
Early.
Yeah.
I guess we need to set it at ten and we hope that we don't have to pay it.
I'd go if I had been court, as I had paid there.
Shoot, you know how much that's gonna cost while I'm in court there?
I don't see how they'd beat us with it, we didn't hire them.
Yeah. We was at the.
I hope Tony found out something today. So foot ten and hopefully he can use it.
That's what I'm gonna do.
Emergencies, was that all we bought that other owner app?
No, this is where we had to pay back, um, that five, five thousand two hundred sixty eight dollars back on a FEMA.
So money we had left in the camera and then we got it out and then this, then we.
Yeah. Had to give it back to them?
Not all of it.
Not all of it, but that may.
So that should be zero?
Zero.
Yeah, we still came out pretty good, but. Magnets, administrative.
Um.
Put it down.
This includes, uh, let's see, several payments to Hyde Construction.
Is this for the commix?
There's Hyde Construction.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
May have to. If you want it.
It's a contract.
I know, but who is that?
Michael Hyde. Michael Hyde from Berkeley.
Or bigger than gets it.
What's her name?
How many is it? I don't think we got that much, uh.
Okay, we didn't budget by six twenty five, spent ten thousand.
So what did she did?
Yeah, he gets our commix and our crushing ride and.
Why's that not under the street department though?
He holds it for us. He holds it for us.
Yeah, yeah, he ain't getting bigger loans and I don't carry our foot with their.
Yeah, that should've been under street department, not that.
I mean, I understand, I'm just.
You were saying that anybody gone, we done gone with that explosion.
Yeah, if you want me to handle it, I'll stop a bunch of that.
They won't.
I had put his on the street because I didn't notice that.
But you start a new perspective for it, right?
Cause that's what I meant.
Is that what it was though? Coal base and all that?
Okay.
So I can, we didn't budget by six hundred twenty five, all we spent ten thousand, that's something.
On what?
Have you got that in there?
Well, see, we budgeted, we budgeted twenty thousand on the street department, we only spent nine, so it looks like some of that's in there.
Right down five twenty three.
Yeah. Uh, construction is fifty seven seventy five.
Yeah. So maintenance for administrative should be like your printers, your office supplies.
Mailing maintenance.
We've got.
Not building maintenance, that's separate.
Park feature, I mean, it was just an oversight because.
Mailing.
Well, there, there's a separate one for vehicles up on the back, back there's the lab. So that would be like anything, but there's also one here that says office repairs.
Maybe. Everything. That's the, they all in one too, reviews and maintenance.
So. Yeah.
Yeah, we had, um, several for Clark in here. Uh, extreme fire, um. That was, I guess they're.
The farmers that need it worked on?
Yeah, but.
The hall?
I mean, it, it's flooded a couple times and they can work on it, but just getting a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, another thing in there was the floors, uh, being waxed. Beans cleaning sixteen ninety three eighty.
Is that could go under administrative maintenance, but.
I will change out all of the Hyde Construction. To street.
Loving me up tomorrow.
You, you've cured our road.
We didn't got into those salaries yet, that we figured out, we only got one person, hard for, but we're over budgeting on salaries that we, you know what?
I wonder what that is.
Yeah. Okay, so she gonna fix that, now what's next? What?
Are you gonna put anything in that bucket?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Uh.
Is there a way that, that you could break this out per department and you could go line up by line up just strictly off the department, say? Because when you budget, when we budgeted the police department, for example, we went what, how many people there was gonna be in there, what their tire expenses was, you know, several years ago. And we come up with a conclusion, it's gonna be two hundred twenty five thousand dollars. That included uniforms every bit of it. I know you've got them like coded, like oh four, Carlos, like one department left, and that way you could actually see. It would be easier to do it.
Keep all the departments together.
Yeah.
Yes.
Made you to look at my department.
Well, we could.
Because we've got a lot, it seems like a lot of the same codes.
Those implications.
Yeah, you know, have to, we can build that and.
Yeah, and that would be a lot to, to keep up with.
Yeah.
So what do we wanna do in emergence? I mean, uh, where, where is the maintenance administrative? Six twenty five.
Don't know.
Five or six thousand dollars, I don't know.
I don't know.
Hope we put. The floors on there and then. The five two maintenance.
Well, the reason, the reason I'm asking that, if you can, if she, if we can go in there and build that and you say, we don't need this account, we don't need this one, this is the, then you can narrow it down and say, this, everything's gonna go in it. Cause she's having to move stuff around, which is unnecessary and it's not very productive for her time. Because if she's having to do this, then move it over here and then move it over here, I, I mean, that's confusing.
Well, I agree, but do we?
And they're just saying that's.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying anything.
I'm saying maybe it's helping me a lot and she's not as familiar as we're.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is you got, we got too many codes.
And.
Cause miscellaneous could be one thing, this means something else, this is over here and they all could be one. And then that way you're not having to sit here and go in between fifty thousand things and explain to us what this means. It'd be easier on you, so I'm saying.
Yeah, she's helping me more, but she's learning the codes better, but I'm gonna start it at the end of every month, going through it and seeing, but, but I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
What have you saying is do away with.
With a bunch of.
Some of those.
Yeah, there's, I mean.
Well, that's why we changed it to have it line item, to see what department it was in.
Well, and we can even do that, but can we keep them together like street department? Police department, administrative.
What you do?
Where we don't start on something, on line item one and then we're doing the same, nearly the same issue on the last line item.
She should be able to do a, but not, I'm not talking about her, I don't know if Carla's got that access, it may be at Rensley, I don't know. They can do a query off of these codes and actually build an Excel spreadsheet where it only pulls oh one and that's all you're seeing in it. In that department oh one and department oh seven.
I'm sure it can be done at Sage too.
And in that way we can look, say, hey, like right now she's having to combine a couple of things, she's already said, we're gonna combine maintenance and repairs and this. That way we scratch it off and then she can go in and, these are gone, this is what you're looking at, cause we got a bunch of extra stuff we don't need here. That clutters us up.
It really makes it confusing because you don't know where to put certain. Invoices, so.
Mm-hmm.
I think it would help everybody and help y'all and, and help.
And some of it would be really still, some of it would still be, you know, kinda hard to figure out unless everybody discussed it, where you put, just like y'all said about the floors. It, you know, would it be under the office administration or would it go under building maintenance or something like that? Some of it's still gonna be a little bit hard to decide, but you can break it down and get some.
It would've been spent, they were making the spend longer, seat forward, that's all you need, showing why it was planned.
All right. So fifty two three oh one.
Eight thirty eight. Right wing, so what do you think?
We won't put anything in, in that.
Good point.
Go ahead and build the budget.
Oh, no, these are the ones she was gonna combine. You remember we talked about combining maintenance and equipment over here? You're gonna have to combine them first and say what the budget's gonna be.
So do you wanna skip them down there?
You're gonna have to fix the categories and in that way it'll, it'll combine the totals and say, yeah, we're good with that.
Fifty two three forty. Is that where you're gonna go?
Oh, yeah, that's a flat, that's pest control.
But I mean, is that what you're doing, going to?
Yeah. Yeah.
And that ain't flat.
Well, I mean, it's, he's gonna raise the.
Because you're making sixteen ninety five, so.
And is he raising the cost of that up this year?
We started spraying the, uh.
The pool and, so we did go work during this year.
Which we could probably in the offseason have them not spray that building.
Do the head wash or something like that.
Rats or something.
Ain't nothing down there.
Is, is all that, the gal?
Yeah. Yeah.
Put our own blue traps out.
Yeah.
But anyway, we'll, we'll sixteen ninety five on that, seventeen hundred to make it easy math. All right, pool maintenance. Built two fifty into the budget.
Well.
I don't know about maintenance, but like we paid John to get the pool ready, is that?
See, that's under pool expense.
What, what's in here is, um, I paid Tabby three fifty five ninety nine for umbrellas.
Well, don't say maybe reimbursed, that makes it sound like a.
Well, that's, I'm sorry, camera.
Yeah.
She bought them and I reimbursed her. Um, we, um, had someone rent the pool and they gave us the whole one hundred dollars, so we had to write checks to Caitlin and John. And for some, some reason that got in there and it's not supposed to be.
For pool maintenance? So, the pool maintenance and the one over here, it says pool expense.
That should be the.
Should those be combined?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then that's gonna go out of the capital improvement if we have to paint or do anything on that, cause you know.
It's gonna have to come out of that parking rack we've already approved.
Yeah, I know. That, that comes out of your parking rack that you've approved, but you gotta put a budget in here. So if you combine those, are you gonna spend, you're gonna spend two or three thousand dollars again to get that pool up, up to speed, you gotta do it every year. It costs, I mean, even once the Sweeney done it, it was forty five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars that he done.
This. The pool's gonna fall under the parking rack though, so we're either gonna have to go back and change that.
Oh, you're saying put the pool under the parking rack, huh?
Yeah, we just got to.
Well, right now it's broke out, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
On the expenses. Not on revenue, revenue.
Where we set thirty thousand dollars. Budget for the parking rack. We're either gonna have to use.
Well, we haven't, we haven't used it in here yet. We have not broken out any of the expenses where we're gonna u- utilize it.
Yeah, I know, some sale, we're gonna have to make it work out of that thirty.
Yeah. Correct.
To get everything done that we do.
Correct. So you got a minimum of two to three thousand dollars that you have to pay just to get that pool opened up.
So pool maintenance is gonna be zero, we're gonna move it all to pool expense.
Right.
Okay.
Or we're gonna do that.
Now, your pool expense consists of opening it up, all your chemical for the year. So your chemical cost is gonna drive it up too. That's not coming out of your capital improvement, is it?
Mm-hmm, you can't.
So.
Salaries?
Well, your salaries is separate.
General.
Yeah. So is that where she's gotta have, should it be that the pool maintenance is the. Carl should be pool maintenance would be to maintain the pool for chemical balance? Or what do you, what do you wanna do there?
Well, it's an expense too, so.
They do want. They don't matter.
Yeah, we're putting it under expense.
They do want the same.
Same thing.
Okay, combine.
All right. Set that at five thousand. Let's get the pool ready, buying the chemicals. We paid a small water bill for filling up the pool, we're gonna do that each year.
So you're setting the pool expense at five thousand or the pool maintenance?
We, yeah. Yeah.
Pool expense slash maintenance, whatever. She's combining those two, there's one on the.
Pool expenses. We're gonna zero it out now.
Sixty three eight oh five dash oh five on the back side.
We're kinda getting a little bit ahead, but, uh.
Yeah.
While we're on.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All right, we're ready for, uh, fifty two four oh three.
Mm-hmm.
And this festival expense, we're not already. We're not gonna talk about it.
It's not to that extent, it's been about a long while.
Probably that's gonna be fireworks, if not.
All right, which most of this is donated money. I don't, do you know how much it's paying?
Yes, part of it is the.
Yeah, but you still gotta account for it, cause we're gonna spend it every year, you know, to do the. The, is that not the, the fall festival and neighbor day, all in one professional experience?
It's June fourth and.
And the one we do at, uh, neighbor day, yeah.
And neighbor day.
So it seems like we're being consistent, so we're good. Keep it.
Uh, ten, two, yeah. I'll make it like it is, yeah. All right, there is that.
Are they having processing curves?
No.
They are?
No.
I don't think so, I ain't heard of them. Did we miss the payment or did we over budget by a month? It's like five hundred different, it's five fifty, what we paid a month for.
Mm-hmm. I thought that. We missed one, I don't know.
Black street was hard, wasn't it?
Yeah. So it should be five fifty times twelve.
Sixty six six hundred.
Yeah.
So it's got to be that.
Right. Six, six hundred minute, there.
Yeah, it's gotta be. Medical, street department, zero. Medical, street department, zero. Budgeted one fifteen, I'm not sure it was.
I think that, um, that was because of, um.
What about medical kit?
It was, it was a, not a medical kit. I think it was some, um. Urinalysis that they were trying to charge us for. On somebody and we didn't, I think it just went away.
So zero?
Yeah.
Check it, go and supplies. Let's say do away with that if we can.
Which one?
Medical, street.
Yeah.
All right, sixty two five oh one miscellaneous administration.
I try not to have anything miscellaneous. Try to put it somewhere.
You want us to zero it out?
Yeah, I'll say. I just think miscellaneous is, it's gotta be something.
Yeah.
Don't have a name to it, so. Miscellaneous police department.
That needs to be zeroed out too.
So they got seven hundred and it.
That was the whole tally with the.
Stripping.
The stripping, so we could put that under a, an expense.
Yeah, as long, I mean, as long as we have the receipt to show what it is. Office supplies administrative. Seventy six, sixty five budget, fifty three oh two actual. But now we are, well.
We're thirty five hundred, we had it.
Yeah, thirty five hundred. Carla, your credit or what is on, did you get that in October?
I'm gonna make sure it's on here. That'll be paid for in October. I mean, in, in November they billed me. I got it last month.
How much did you take?
It was, um, three, around three fifty.
So that's thirty eight fifty that we know.
Well, that's additional because it's.
Yeah, because we'll have to keep getting our regular supplies.
So we're looking at nine thousand.
And also in that is our postage.
So it needs to be ten thousand?
As long as, uh.
And then office supplies.
Fire department. We budgeted four twenty, actual zero. I think they're buying all their stuff they need now or not. We'll do away with that. Zero that. Office supplies, police department. Budgeted eight, eight sixty, actual six eighty seven. Pretty close on that. Eight fifty. Office supplies, police two.
Do away with, what is it?
I don't know, they didn't use it, so.
I think it'd be training or something. I guess that's what that T stands for.
We need to stay at that, that other, put a thousand in there there.
Well, they didn't use it.
They didn't use it.
They might have told us that for training. They need to start doing some progressive shooter training and all of that.
But those are, those are actually not.
That's office supplies.
Yeah, that's office supplies. That's for like paper and stuff. Those shouldn't have any.
If they do, they, they buy it under normal.
And why don't we have two different ones then? That's what I wanted to say.
I'd have to go in there and pull it up to see what the whole line said. Cause it cut it off. It's got something to do with training or something. I don't remember why we did it. And it's even got a, a weird code on it. It's got a dash tweeny on it.
All right. Three oh one operations administration.
Don't know what you're following.
We're budgeted fifty five. I don't know, I don't have it.
And we don't, I usually don't put anything in that either.
Operations, street department, zero.
We only, we spent that, let's say do away with them.
Zero, police department. Sixty three, five hundred payroll taxes, water. Two thousand seventy five, actual seventeen twenty four. Those pretty consistent.
How come the payroll tax administration is the third highest over the water?
Five oh one or five eleven?
Five oh one. It's four thousand dollars. We only budgeted two. Cause the other ones pretty much met what they were supposed to be. You know, we were pretty close on target on those.
Hang in there, though.
How they are.
You passed your bedtime, man.
Boy, I worked hard today.
It's really only nine o'clock.
Matt Dillon's coming on.
Should be ten, that's it.
It comes on like nine and then ten and eleven. John Wayne, you wanna sit him up for a act or do you know? James Darnett, yeah, he is. He's gonna pick the better one, too. He does good at rock'em. Yeah, no. James Darnett, Matt Dillon, gunsmith. He gets beat every night drawing, but he kills the other one.
Do we need to come back to these?
Well, I was just thinking we've got, um. Some of these have gotten. A Ronald Delrodas on here. And it should be straightened out.
Late and finished up.
But, um. I don't know why, the taxes are off because they're not supposed to be. They're supposed to be set up with their code in and whatnot. I don't know what went wrong. We've got all the swimming pool people on here.
So all these need to be fixed. We need to just come back to them.
Well, that, I mean, that is ridiculous. I don't know. Usually that is set up where you just go in and put your. I wanna understand why it's not doing right. Cause I'm, all these others. The admin is what's off. I don't know why.
We need to come back to it tomorrow.
Yeah, cause I'm, I'll have to look at it.
What, from sixty three, five hundred through sixty three?
Five eleven.
Five eleven.
All right, next item, property tax.
We don't have to pay property tax, so it should be zero.
Yeah, although we budgeted any. All right, police miscellaneous expenses.
That one's.
Seven nine eight hundred or forty ten.
Five oh seven, we got miscellaneous too.
Well, the police department expense was ten thousand four hundred dollars, isn't it? That's miscellaneous, so it should have been in other accounts instead of under miscellaneous.
Yeah, we're getting budgeted three oh one.
Well, really you should never have miscellaneous expenses.
Well, what this is, is Bill LePraet, five thousand dollars. Steve Boyen, five thousand dollars.
Bonuses, yeah.
No, that's the signing bonuses, yeah. Signing.
Yeah, bonuses.
So that needs to be a zero?
I think we've learned our lesson.
Well, I mean, it was a good deal. It saved us money. We got burnt one time.
No, we didn't care. We did it.
I mean, for now.
May not be in my lifetime.
Cheaper than sending them to the academy. All right, we done pool expense, parking wreck repairs.
It's just some of them.
That's where you was gonna budget, it's a twenty fi- thirty thousand dollars.
You'll put it in there.
But you're gonna have to take and knock it down to twenty five if you're gonna spend five thou- but, but you've been spending on the pool every year anyway. So.
But it may be going over budget.
You ain't been going over budget because of that pool. Three thousand dollars does not give you, that's not a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, we still gotta budget it.
Uh.
We still gotta budget it.
I know, you did budget it. You budgeted thirty three hundred dollars and we spent twenty two hundred and we went up to five thousand's what you said. So we only increased that to seventeen hundred.
Yeah, but we, we took thirty thousand to budget for parking wreck, so we've gotta make that work.
Yeah, you're gonna add thirty thousand, but you're not taking another five. You said that earlier is what I'm saying. You said that you would have to take part of that five and come out of that, also out of that original thirty. And you're not gonna have to because we only increased the budget by seventeen hundred dollars. Cause we combined. The other one. I don't remember which one it was. She, she combined the maintenance and the pool expenses together. And you wrote, you put it in at five thousand's what you said.
Yeah.
And in parking wreck, you gonna put thirty thousand?
I'm saying we're, we're spending thirty thousand in parking wreck. Including the pool.
Well, that's not what you said earlier. You said earlier we were gonna take thirty thousand dollars out of capital improvement. And you was gonna put it, but we already had budgeted in here thirty three, that, thirty three hundred dollars previous. So if it's already in there, budgeted for the previous year, why would you not keep that? So you're gonna take away that previous budget in, from that.
Cause we said when we made it thirty, we were gonna have to make thirty work.
But that's not what I'm talking about. You already had the pool expense every year anyway. It's not part of the capital expense. It's to maintain it. You're not.
Yeah, capital improvement, that's the maintenance fee. What you're saying.
Yeah.
You're not improving it, you're maintaining it.
Right.
Well, did we not take care of that with the five thousand?
No, that was your expense to open it, your painting, you know, all that stuff that you gotta do every year, your chemical that you gotta buy. That is part of that. It cannot be, so that has to stay separate. And then you said you was gonna pull thirty thousand out of capital improvement and put it in parking wreck.
All right, so we can get five thousand in the pool right now, right?
Yeah.
For maintenance, yeah.
And how much, Carla, give me a minute, I have to have you look that up. We probably spent close to thousand dollars or twelve hundred dollars just on chemical.
Yeah, I'm sure.
At least, and that can't come out of that. So you're gonna have those expenses for your water, for all that other stuff we gotta do.
Well, we don't, we don't got that decided at five thousand. Then put that.
But now he was gonna take twenty five thousand out of it separately.
Put thirty thousand in parking wreck. It wasn't what we said, maybe we'll.
Supplies of the parking wreck, we spent fifteen hundred and nine dollars and I'm sure that's where it's at.
Yeah.
Parking wreck repairs. Uh, I mean, I think we need to move all that pool expense. Seventy zero.
Wait a minute.
We will throw a park wreck money out.
I'll take a break and let me tell you all something.
Yeah, let's say that.
Well, I ain't got to say much on that, so I've gotta talk. I'm gonna tell you all, I know they all think you know a lot more than I do, but I've been around this stuff a lot longer than y'all have. If you want to simplify this thing, put your police department. Everything that's on this comes out of police department. Everything you spend and the money that we budget goes into it and everything we spend for police, it don't matter if it's insurance or, or.
As long as you got a reason for it.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, advocate in the police department. Go to the street department, do the same thing. Everything it's spent for the street department or coming out of the street department. Set up a park and wreck department. Everything it's spending, the swimming pool, the gym.
Just like the state, set a, set a separate budget for each department. That's what they got to spend and that's it, yeah.
And that's what the county does. And everything.
That's why the department, correct.
Your gym and your, uh, swimming pool and everything at park wreck comes out of parking wreck.
And then you are putting all the line up.
That's exactly right.
We said that an hour ago. I'm glad you both did.
No, I heard you say it, but I wanted to go and, and have a solid waste department.
We did, we did.
I know we got it set up skipping around, but, but if you got the solid waste, everything it's spent out of solid waste.
Yeah.
And they're, and then you have it all together.
So I'm disagreeing with what you said and add, and add, and add to it.
I'm like, but you, you agree to me, all right.
Yeah, and add to it, you know, with all the different departments.
Right.
But you could do that and you could go through this thing a lot quicker.
Or kicked that one, then I kicked that one.
That's all I got.
All right, what's next? That worked, yeah.
Yeah.
So let's go back to what would, did you say on parking wreck repairs, do it in the Z row?
Yeah, uh, no, I was thinking about, uh, pool.
They just put, yeah, no car wreck.
See, that pool, the pool gonna be at one.
By a thousand, I see it. That's what we said earlier.
Yeah.
Five thousand?
What?
But is the pool gonna be at five? Pool expense?
We, we've, we've allowed five to open it.
Chemicals and all.
Yeah.
And change it kinda.
Keeping it in. Park wreck is gonna wave a flag around all that.
And, and the reason they broke it out is because the, the pool has so much expenses over anything else to do with parking wreck.
It's gonna be thirty thousand.
Uh, but, but it's still part of parking wreck.
I know, but they broke it out for.
Just like, just like that's buying the backhoe and running the brakes up on the street department. It's still a street department.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's a subcategory underneath. It's all it is.
But it wouldn't be much easier to be.
That's blue.
Together, yeah.
And I don't know how hard that would be on accounting.
We can't do it this year, but next year we ought to look at that.
We can, we can, we've got the ability to do a budget for, I mean, for each thing and I think we have some reports set up already.
Yeah, they do.
That's what the county does.
Yeah. Uh, parking wreck repairs.
But where you gonna put that thirty? The only place we got land.
Yeah, I think we can get it too. Alright. Wonder more on that one, I was thinking sixty-four hundred, retirement expense.
All this retirement, now Brenda's had to redo, you know, all of the, uh, retirement.
Push it down on table.
Um, due to. The state changing the way it's done.
So the year-to-date through good hard numbers. She's reworking.
Um, as far as I know, they are, she's worked hard on trying to get it like they need it, and. I don't know.
Give me thirty-two hundred.
Once she got built in for wreck.
On what?
Retirement.
There's not any, cause we don't have a parking wreck director, so there shouldn't be anything in there.
Same.
Right, there should be a zero. If you had, you know, she's going off of other counties and cities, I mean, cause they would have that. The, um. The retirement expense in the street department, the reason it's high is because we're having to pay for those other ones, ain't it? And we've gotta discuss that here in a second.
Cause they, they mattered, you have, you know.
Right.
If you work at a job where you make the retirement at all.
Yeah.
Then you.
And unless, go over the rule, unless you're part-time.
I don't, I don't think it matters.
Yes, it does.
You have to, um, report them.
Correct.
And you do.
But if you consider a person part-time, they cannot work over any hours.
Twenty-nine, that, that don't matter, you still have to pay retirement.
Yeah, that one.
State retirement after a certain amount of time, working length, you have to start paying into them, period.
That's correct, that's correct. That's correct. That's correct.
They just changed that.
Unless, unless you're not a state employee.
Couple of years ago.
If you hire somebody part-time, like Mr. Elrod, he's not a state employee, we don't have to pay into that, is what I'm trying to point him.
Right. Right. But you still have to report him.
That is correct.
Yes, and just like the, uh, uh, the people at the pool.
Yeah.
Even by, and he's checking the portal now.
You have to report everybody, but if they already draw the state retirement.
Now, you, you. We have to pay into them.
Even if they're part-time, you have to pay into it.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, if you look and you try to hire supplemental help, you may wanna look at that, because that's added benefit that costs a town one month.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
So those, Carla, we feel like those retirement numbers are. They are what they are.
I mean, I would have to talk to Brenda, but I, I don't know why they wouldn't be.
Always way off on that retirement expense, true, but, but double.
Well, that's what I was going at, it's cause.
Thirty-nine and five, thirty-nine and five thousand, you money.
That, that's also based on. Hours worked and all that, cause if you look on down here, the street department was over budget bad.
I know, I might come from being.
Yeah.
We, we can look at that too, though.
We can say fifty thousand, sound like.
We're up on. We're up on all of it, looks to be like.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that year-to-date, that, that's gonna be our budget. For now.
What?
On the retirement.
Yeah.
Where she's figuring our year-to-date, that's gotta be the.
Well, it, it could, it could go down.
Well, it says the budget for now. Yeah, it could.
Based on your, but it'd have to be your supplemental help. Is the only way it would go down.
So I do like the sixty-four.
It, it's not gonna go down with your police department, because all your police department are in state retirement.
Yeah.
The only department that it would vary in would be your street department.
And I will get her looking, it's with me, um, it might be Thursday, if she gets to come Thursday, but, um.
Your water department could vary too. There's a lot of, your water department could vary too a little bit.
Thirty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Thirty-two hundred.
Uh, the Masca Daryl people, thirty-two oh one, make it thirty-two hundred.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that.
Twenty-three ninety-eight is twenty-four hundred.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Make it a little bit easier to figure. Thirty-two hundred. And twenty-four hundred. Zero that next line out.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Then the street.
It's hard.
That's one time that's a lot of that.
Mm-hmm. But, but. Yep.
Something. Leaving it not many work, gonna be the man time, but.
Uh, yeah, not anymore.
And next one's twenty-one seven. Let's see.
Twenty-two, we're not doing.
Twenty-two seventy-eighty, or twenty-two, or twenty-one seven? What do you want to round to?
Yeah, let's see, twenty-two. Twenty-four. Twenty-one.
Which one are y'all naming?
Salary, I said.
Salaries, oh no, salaries on the water department are not right. They, they make more, there's two of them that are full-time, and they make more than.
This is just Mandy's.
Huh?
It's just Mandy's.
Okay, so they're, we're not having to put theirs in here on our budget?
Sure.
No, the water department has that.
Well, I understand, we aren't, why aren't we having to put some of this other stuff in here then?
That's what I was.
He asked it earlier.
That is, that is, if you wanted them to reimburse us for that.
That was like Don was saying about, they let them have it all.
Yeah. Oh.
Let's say, if they buy their uniform, let them pay it, let them pay their insurance, that way we ain't gotta handle their money and get a check.
The next one's mayor and council.
But send calls to them, build them.
The next one's mayor and council, is that correct, or is it just mayor?
Uh, mayor and council.
It's mayor.
That was not right either.
Yeah, I don't see how that was.
Because just us five council people is six thousand dollars a year, not counting what he, he just.
That lord's mercy, you making more than we are there.
No, I ain't shit, a hundred dollars a month, right, ninety-seven dollars, that's six thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, right, yeah. One, two, three, four, five.
So.
Mine's ninety-one.
Fifty-seven hundred?
Yeah.
Plus that.
You know what? Mine's ninety-one, you know.
You gotta say.
Well, no, it's, you gotta take taxes out.
Well, and those tickets run up to me.
That's true.
Yeah.
That's right.
Well, I mean, you got eleven eighty-eight one, and we've only budgeted ten-five, so it should be flat, our, our, ours don't go up, that's just what I'm saying.
But, um, I would defer here.
Think about the, the prices, right?
No.
Fifty-seven hundred plus what, what is yours?
I'm saying, we budgeted ten-five-two-five.
So we spent a lot of money in it.
We should have went twelve or whatever, and we boo-booed on that, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying what the actual is. Cause that's gonna be constant. Yeah. We just boo-booed, I don't know, I don't know why it's fell off them. That's all I'm saying.
Eight, eight, one?
Yeah. So whatever that is, that should be.
Eleven seven.
Eleven seven, okay.
That works you, the number you're gonna use?
Uh, we can't on that one, cause it's.
Yeah, we'll get raises, it stays flat.
Eleven seven.
That's right.
Well, we're in the year-to-date, how did our woman come up with eleven eighty-one eighty-two?
I don't know.
Cause that says year-to-date, date actual, that's supposedly her figure, isn't it?
That's what it says.
We don't even get overtime for tonight, do we?
Oh, this special waiting word, I know.
That's correct.
It's a lot this year.
Salaries, pool. Sixty-seven hundred. Great department, sixty-seven thousand.
Okay, it's not gonna park yet.
I ain't Chad.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, you being. Well, we need to talk about that department.
Well, I've tried to, three years, fell on bed here.
At what point are we gonna hire another full-time person?
Not in the wintertime.
Well, uh, I'm not talking about the full-time season, we're talking about, when are we gonna hire another person?
Period.
I mean, I don't.
Period.
Probably spring.
Because, you know, the, uh, cause the only reason was that y'all usually, all we do is Bushoff, that's not true, cause we got a lot of maintenance stuff that should be going on in wintertime. And we were showed all this stuff that needs to be done, and we're not doing it.
We've had three and even four people hired before on the street department.
Don't go there.
This town never needed that, ever.
Don't go there.
I mean, it didn't, I mean, it didn't.
You, you, you've run with four people on the street department, um, for ten years or whatever. They maintained it, then we went down to three. And then we went down to three, and then we hired another part-time, because the other two supposedly.
Two full-time guys should be able to.
You had three full-time and a part-time working constantly, no, he didn't work just in the summer, he worked all the time.
And a work time and summer time. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, when we hire a full-time guy, and then if we have to hire somebody like Ronald Bushoff in summer.
But. I, I understand, but you got salaries right now, if you budget your money, you budget off of your straight time of one employee. You're budgeting and you went over budget in the street department, and this individual that is full-time did not work hardly any overtime. So that extra money came off of two people working a lot of overtime.
No, they didn't have any overtime.
What?
They didn't have any overtime.
Well, where did the extra, where, how did we go over budget in that department then?
I don't know, cause they didn't have no overtime.
And then he goes into the part, can they work full-time if they're considered part-time?
I don't, I don't think he's working full-time.
Darrell, he is too, don't, don't go there.
He's not working full-time.
He has to.
When he has.
What's the definition of part-time?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine hours.
Like over.
Do you work that, how many times does a couple of individuals that's considered part-time is working more than that?
They all say. Air weight.
Air, a lot. And so that means we've either gotta make a plan to put somebody on full-time.
One of our part-times fixing to be completely out for wintertime.
You're still missing the point.
But he's still making that eleven thousand dollars three months he's working in.
Uh, and not against it, I mean, we need to hire somebody full-time.
But we're gonna wind up in trouble with the state.
That's right.
If they have a checkers.
And you get into other situations.
That, I mean, that ain't, that ain't no issue, we'll take care of that.
I mean, we, we, we can't do that, I mean, we're getting into, you got cut back because of it too, when you were working for them. And we've gotta control that, we can't say that, you know, your life is this.
Well, that's like our retired employees, it started out at thirty-two and they said twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what are we gonna do? Hmm? That's your department, what are we gonna do?
Gotta be back to part-time now.
And then what are you gonna do next? You've still got all this work that's gotta get done. You've already determined, you've got a lot of maintenance stuff that's gotta get done, who's gonna do it?
We still got another sheet to go over. And it's nine-thirty.
Yeah. Cause you gotta, you gotta set your budget for that department.
What did you say?
Right now, that, that budget of sixty thousand dollars or whatever it was. How many people's salaries that, sixty-seven thousand dollars? That's three people's salaries, if you go back and look. That's three full-time employees, cause that's what you originally had in the budget when we took office. And that's what we carried over every year, was three full-time employees, are you gonna cut this budget? It's not him, that's us, we gotta ask that question.
Yeah, well, obviously not, that's not around sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty.
I mean, is that not what we budgeted?
I believe it's fifty-six one forty, it looks like.
And that's, that was three people's salary, is what it was, when we built it.
What are y'all on Saturday, what made it?
You said it on the names of the department, not going on the chart there, so that's what you gotta look at.
Well, for the dollar amount we paid, did we get the work accomplished? If we did, we'll set it at sixty-seven and hire a full-time and rock on down the road. Hire one tomorrow, and then that'll leave you about fifteen thousand to pay somebody to Bushoff. It's that simple.
It ain't that simple, you can hire one tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay.
Cause you get a post, you have two weeks.
You gotta post it.
Well, that's hypothetical. We ain't got to wait till summer.
Well, I, I'm not hiring a full-time guy.
Well, you ain't got to, we'll vote on it, you gonna make any vote, no?
Y'all vote.
They said, they said, I mean, you tell one up here, there's two, six of us.
That's exactly right.
Well, I, I don't like the, the excuse that we don't have things to do in the wintertime.
We do have things.
One person can't do it by themselves, there's some things that.
Yeah, but one in part-time, they amazing, they amazing.
Cause in the wintertime, you gotta do ditches before you get ready for that, it's not being done all that.
Tabby, I know it's gonna be done, one in the part-time can do it.
But you can only have part-time twenty hours.
And when it rains all winter, they, they have to be in the shop, they can't work. So if y'all wanna hire one.
They don't have to be just in the shop there.
Where can they?
There's buildings that they gotta maintain, there's paintings can be done, there's a lot of stuff.
They can go in and play them. That's right. Last year it rained every day in the wintertime.
And mechanics on.
And then, huh?
And mechanics.
That's right, there's a lot of stuff that can be done.
Y'all post one tomorrow, we'll hire one.
You can't post it tomorrow, you said that.
Well, you can post it.
You can't vote on that tonight, we're just discussing what we need to do.
You can post a job.
We have to vote on the posting, we can't vote tonight.
Whenever you have a post.
We're saying, what can we do to, are we gonna set this budget for two people, or what are we doing, that's all I'm asking.
No, you wanna hire another one through the winter full-time, I don't wanna.
I didn't say that. Did not say that, not been working, I said, we need to set the budget according, the budget was set for three people last year.
Yes, you did.
Are we gonna continue that process through the year and budget for three individuals in this department?
We will, we will set the budget at last year's budget, then we'll make that work. Until we hire full-time and get it changed at.
Which is what value?
Fifty-six thousand one forty.
And that was for three, I'm blowing it.
That's who, how many, ever, how many you have to bet?
It's a full-time, part of all part-time.
You usually part-time, if you just keep on it, like you're saying, the.
Twenty hours.
Yeah.
Alright, police department.
So you're setting that at what?
Fifty-six one forty.
Oh, okay, I thought I said sixty-seven, I went.
Well, that's what they spent this year.
Okay.
Alright, police department, we set the budget at one thirty-six three ninety, and we spent one fifty-nine eight si- eight ninety-six.
Way over there, it's pretty bad, huh?
Oh, that's. Ain't no way that's, it, um. When they done the average of that, Carla, was they counting into the point there are benefits in that? Cause you remember when we done that originally, that was higher than that? I'm talking about when Kenny done that, cause that don't seem right, I know that's been dropped down because of the four-person salary.
It probably wasn't, because I don't think Kenny did this, I don't.
Yeah.
Kenny's been going, hey, Kenny's gonna have to do this.
No, they didn't want him topping that, Darrell, it's, we budgeted the figures originally off of the five-person twenty-four, did you ask that question? Did y'all wanna work twenty-four-sevens? You want a police department, and we laid the figures out, and it was gonna be this amount of money. That value will not even touch that. I mean, that's not even close to that value. Cause at five people's salaries, if you don't work any overtime. That was twenty-four-seven, you had to do those figures, and then we, we raised it.
How much do, how much do our police one make a year?
They're making fourteen dollars an hour. If you're not, we're not saying supplement work, cause you gotta go off of that.
So figure that four, a bit forty hours of relief.
Whatever that value is. Then how much the chief makes, what is it then? You write it down if you want to, don't say it out loud. Okay.
Well, that's just.
You just have to.
Oh.
That, that's not a full, that's just an add-on above full police, huh?
What?
Your salary, the chief's.
Well, no, he gets paid that.
I know, but, but I'm saying, that's just, we just got the full account of chief.
Yeah, yeah, but what we budgeted it, it was for, it was for twenty-four-seven coverage, it wasn't for how many people, but, cause he could go out here and supplement off of it, cause he was trying to cut overtime. And that way, as long as you go in below that value, so if you say that you're gonna cover twenty-four-seven coverage, how many hours is that in a year, times those salaries, and that's what you're, set your budget at? And whatever that value is. So that would be four people at forty hours a week, times fifty-two, times whatever that dollar value is. And then one person at forty hours a week, times fifty-two, times that other, whatever those total up to be, be whatever it is, is that not correct?
Yeah.
Does that sound right, okay?
Yeah, what's your total?
That's twenty-four-seven coverage, oh, I hadn't done that yet. And then multiply that time, and then that way you could save on that or supplement that, that's what you're doing there.
Times one thirty-six, three ninety.
How much?
One thirty-six, three ninety.
Oh, no, I think it's the one that, I don't know, I'm leaving that.
I know, but that's what you gonna have to do to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and he's talking about salaries, anybody in here works for state, can get on the checkbook, so the governor's mind, anybody in here probably by the hour, by the month, by the week, taxes and all.
One fifty-one.
I don't see that what they make, so I don't know, I mean, private. Well, I didn't know it was.
That's, that's what it is out there.
Cause anybody, anybody can see what I make.
That's if you're doing twenty-four-seven coverage, and you, you have that as a, your highest level, and you wanna work below that value.
Well, that's nearly what we spent, we spent one fifty-nine.
That's not include overtime, and then when we originally built it, we added some overtime in there, cause they had their training, they had to do all this, but that's what the number you shoot for, for straight.
Yeah.
And then you work below that.
Well, up to eight thousand, oh.
Yeah, one fifty-one, eight forty.
Well, overtime they had is if they got into a situation where they had to take their vacation or.
Yeah, well, that, that, that was the whole purpose of that field person's supposed to do, but you supplement off of that, so if you say that you want twenty-four-seven coverage around the clock, and it takes that peo- you know, that, to get to that value. That's what it's gonna cost right there, but you wanna work below that, one fifty-one, eight forty, you wanna drive your budget down by either running an open shift or supplementing where you don't have to pay it. That's your high end, we wanna be below that, but you gotta set it for that value.
Yeah, so. That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, so that, what I'm saying.
So we're gonna have a budget, one fifty-one, five eight, eight forty.
Yeah. And then, but you want it to go under that, cause they actually went at one fifty-nine, and that would've been, we would've been perfect on it.
And try to get that. Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
So you say the budget at what, one fifty-one?
One fifty-two.
One fifty-two.
Start watching, hey, you're gonna run an open shift, just saying, why don't I have a budget, you can work.
And if you know in advance where somebody's gonna be off, and, and you can get a part-time person for that, that'd really be good.
Yeah.
Where you don't have to pay overtime.
They try, they, they try to get part-time help, and sometimes we do have the open shift.
Yeah.
All right, salary on the senior center, budgeted eighteen, five eighty, actual sixteen, three ninety.
I'm gonna say we budgeted sixteen, we paid out fifteen, fifteen, eighteen, five eighty.
Does that got, um, donk in there too, cause we didn't have it in there, we had anything else, yeah.
Donk.
Right. That's right. That's what they say, absolutely.
So that sixteen, three ninety is right?
No, we added donk, so it's gonna go up.
No, eighteen.
Eighteen, five eighty.
So the eighteen, five eighty is right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right, so.
Is that value gonna go up?
Setting.
It's staying flat, so it'd be not, put it at not, you gonna leave it at eighteen or nineteen, you gonna round up or just leave it as? Cause it's gotta be eighteen, five eighty, it could be more than that, cause you may work a hour or two, over there.
Yeah.
Never shoot them as, I don't know, I'm just asking.
We'll, we'll leave it at that.
We'll let it come here and be out there.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, it might come here and be out there.
What?
I'll tell you.
No. Okay.
All right, salaries on office personnel, budgeted thirty-four, seven, fifty-five.
No, we're budgeted twenty-nine, three, thirty-five.
He's getting cars, hey.
Twenty-nine, two, thirty-five.
Going over five thousand.
Actual thirty-four, seven, fifty-five.
I don't know what the.
Going over five, fifty-five hundred dollars.
Difference is that because.
Well, how we can go over, Mandy, it's very little overtime, Carlos in salary.
Only thing I know is we're getting, well.
I don't think it's getting right, but I do know that, you know, I cashed in a, two vacations and some sick time, that made it go up, and your one-time raises does too.
You know, we not figuring one-time raises in that, Tabby?
No, we didn't.
We didn't.
Mm-mm. Nope, none of that's in here.
Thankfully, they don't.
Yeah, if you're gonna do that, you have to, and you'd also have to sit that, make a decision that if you're gonna do any kind of raises this year anyway, and that's based on that.
And.
You're gonna have to say that, hey, we might do a half a, you know, one percent or whatever across the board, and you'll have to add that to each one's salary.
And Daryl too, um, that law that's going into place on salary employees.
Yep.
Um. Um, what is it, they have, I'm saying.
Anything below.
To get over forty hours, to get over that.
You pay, if you don't, you have to pay.
If you don't make over a certain amount of thousands of dollars.
You make over the thirty-five thousand.
You're paying overtime.
You get paid overtime, it's salary exempt, true, that's true.
If you, if you make overtime.
You just go to thirty-five thousand, do you mean?
Because, um, I never get paid any overtime.
Right.
Like.
The only, the only way you do, it's called a man, it's called a salary exempt rule now if they pass. And the only way you can get away with that is you have to raise the base, pay it.
Thirty-four, seven, fifty-five, forty-one, just go thirty-five, try to get under it.
To thirty-four or something.
You have to change, you have to raise the level, that way you work.
Maybe that, or if Carlos stole the clock, seeing him on the clock.
I don't know, which I rather do.
Well, we'll have to make, we'll have to decide that before we set that value, cause it's gonna have to be changed. And that's state law, I mean, we can't do anything about that, it's state law.
That's exactly right.
Federal law, yeah.
Yeah.
And even if.
What's the law? They read, they changed the rule on the minimum level that a person that is considered salary, that, um, I think it's thirty-five thousand.
I mean, you'd have to be on the way with.
Then if they were considered salary at thirty-five thousand, they're entitled to overtime a certain amount, there is rules in.
Say on.
So, the reason they done that is because people, they were making some people work sixty-eight hours.
Just gonna say it.
No, I mean, but, if, if you done that, either you'd have to clock in, or Mandy would have to keep your time, or which is.
Well, that, yeah, right, I know that, but, um. Yeah, you can't do it on the route.
I don't, I couldn't work a lot of overtime, I know that, but with a child that I'm in school and everything else going on. And by the way, I, my sister passed away last night, I didn't know if y'all knew that or not, her funeral is tomorrow, and I'm up here with y'all.
Bruce, thanks for being here.
Sure. Geez, man, we could've put this off to Thursday.
Let's, maybe get out of here by midnight. Yeah, all right, see, you, are you thinking, Carla, you might wanna go on the clock, or is it something you're debating?
Well, if I stay on salary, and I just paid overtime when I worked it, I mean, I'm fine with that, I don't, that's something that. Right now, all the meetings we have, I don't, you know, I don't ever get paid anything for that, but I know that's when I came in, that that was part of it, and, and neighbor day.
But, two, when you get to take off, and you don't get paid.
I usually, my doctor's appointments, I try to do it on Wednesday, where we don't have.
But Wednesday's still paid work day.
It is.
So you just think that.
I would have to, I would have to, um, you know, if I took off, like, uh, for the time, I know it would be anything over forty.
You won't think about it, we'll skip over it and we'll come back to it.
And before you can change her, her salary, she can't make that choice, Daryl, it has, I mean, you putting her in a rock and a hard place on that.
That's what I'm saying.
Cause that has to come from the council to say.
I ain't gonna change that tonight, I ain't done with it, saying, yeah, I do, and it's changed.
Yeah. Yeah, we just need to, we need to bring the law in here and let the whole council see that document that says where it is, that thirty-five thousand, that way y'all see it black and white.
I already seen it.
Right, and then we'll have to make a choice.
Was that both of them salary or just hers that's on this sheet?
She's the only one on salary.
I'm saying, this money right here, is that her, Mandy, or just her?
Yes.
I thought Mandy was somewhere else.
Mandy's up in the water, but Carlos is right there under that. And her, her salary is right close to that value that's under actual, she just barely falls under it, yeah.
That's got some, it's got some extra stuff in it, correct?
She's got vacation and sick time, so it, that's not the true salary.
Right.
No, it's not.
Mm-mm, no, it's, it's a little bit below that, but we'll have to look at that value.
No, I thought all these actual figures was off the bar of the poller that went in the numbers for what down there.
I would probably rather stay on salary, and then just keep up with my time anyway, and then if I work any overtime.
Well, it's, it's been debated on a lot of companies, if you take a vacation check, you have to be off that week, we allow people to work and take their vacation check. A lot of companies and places don't, if you take a vacation, they make you be off that week, cause they call it double dip.
That's correct.
So we allow that.
When you earn your vacation, so.
You wanna?
Or did you earn your vacation, so.
Yeah, no, but it's the supplementary week off, vacation.
It gets into labor relation laws, if you, you only paid for time where, that vacation is a bit of time, and you're not paid for it, you have to take off.
Cause everybody was doing.
Can't blame him, I wouldn't, I'd like, they lucky, they can have one after riding around.
Unless you call somebody.
They make it same as everybody else in the county.
So they have pretty good.
They was, we had to look at. When they make the same as, one driver truck, which is wrong, one hauling coal, ain't after putting their life on the line, anyway, that's different, so.
Yeah, he is done it too, he is done it, you wreck and, and get.
Yeah, but that's, that's on you.
Wreck it, James Mitch.
Yeah, I know, it's still, you know.
You, you ain't on the line every time you go out.
It's nine forty, I'm gonna go home.
You gotta, cause you shoot back, it's like they can.
You know, they're dodging bullets, so.
What's next?
I wouldn't care, if I just don't do it, I wanted to do it, I, I didn't wanna be out there.
So we'll come back, Carla, on your.
For us.
No, they ain't, no, fifteen eighty, fif- sixteen eighty ain't bad, Eugene.
Yeah, they.
In the country.
Like a third.
We can't pay like the state does.
Small equipment supplies.
That's got like young welding in it, um.
That should be in the street department expenses.
We got.
Street department, um.
That's more your expenses there.
We fish and put some on yours, we mow your grass, some of that.
I know, I can get that out.
We gave a thirty thousand.
Yeah, yeah, give you thirty thousand dollars.
Them young people, them young people will be happy to have some new equipment.
And you dropping about.
Okay, well.
The small equipment supplies, or since we're full on coverage, they've been.
Different departments.
See, that's, that's another thing, small equipment, wherever it goes, if it's in an office, or if it's a cart and wrecker, or if it's a, uh, street department, you could put that where it goes.
She gonna fix that.
Do we know what each one of those are?
Um.
We all.
I'm gonna get to that. You mean one department?
Yeah.
Yeah, six is street, seven is police, nine is the, uh, I thought it was the fire, I think it's.
Office.
Nine is fire, you're right.
One is office.
One is office.
One is the administration.
Six is street, seven is police, and nine is the fire department.
And then we got office supply administration up here to top two, sixty-three, oh, one, oh, one.
Yep.
This is equipment, small equipment.
We just double dipped it, don't we?
Yeah, that needs to be.
Like beyond welding is.
We through?
No.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
But we on.
That's last page.
I don't have any.
I don't know why we didn't budget anything through the police department on that.
On small equipment, why we even got that category?
Yeah.
That way she can clean, put that in with the other stuff.
We're gonna want it put in with office supplies or?
Is it office supplies, or is it actual, young welding repairs?
Well, I think the young welding is the, is the.
Is it welding laws and tanks and stuff like that?
Types and stuff.
Just whatever it is, move that to supplies for each department.
Yeah. It's not office supplies, it's.
Just the.
Supplies, yeah.
Take a half. Just leave it over there, right there. All right, one more. All right, sixty-five, seven hundred, solid waste expense, we budgeted a thousand fifty, actual five, seven, five, six. And on that, we, on waste management, we paid some out of the general fund to get it caught up sometime beginning of the year. So, a thousand and fifty should be right on that.
This is probably where you need to put those supplies at, is that not general supplies?
Supplies.
Yeah.
Yeah, that you were talking about from that other small equipment.
Supplies administrative, budgeted forty-nine, twenty-five, actual forty-seven, eighty-three.
On the fire department, I know we've probably talked about this before, cause the fire department has a little bit of extra cost on these, are they eventually gonna reimburse us on all this, since they're getting that tax? You know, cause they're, they're, they had an actual expense of thirty-nine hundred.
I have a question here too, because I'm afraid it.
We'll just have to call Steve Hood in here and have him come to a meeting.
That's good. Yeah, okay. That's air gas. And we may be paid, I guess we have, I don't know, like four, I guess that's right.
I mean, normally, they, they pay theirs, I don't, I don't know how it got in our.
There's Don spending another twelve thousand dollars on street department, a little over, Tabby, his street department, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
He was over budget, a hundred, that's where you went over budget, cause.
No, he spent about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
You know, whatever, I'd take it over if I was you, and I'd show them how to do it.
You a hundred thousand dollar budget, you are.
Or you taking over it. Square, you ain't, you ain't over it no way, you never told it, hey, yeah. You just holding the time.
You know, and put that little budget in there, say, Darby, this, we need this, Darby, this.
Don't buy, if you want, don't buy it, Tabby, don't, don't tell me we need it, we don't buy.
There you go.
That's right.
You just, there you go, the budget, right on.
That's right.
Okay, we're getting.
So what are we doing on these supplies?
On the admin.
She's gonna consolidate them.
Con- consolidate that, and then we'll come back to it.
All right. All right, tags and registration, we budgeted a hundred, spent nothing. I don't see where we're gonna spend anything.
Well.
Is there anything?
Do you have to buy tags every year for place cars? Nope, they can.
Yeah.
I just thought.
Yeah, we are out there.
Um, not even for the car that we got. It's.
That's right. Zeroing or? That's right, yeah.
Yeah, just zero. We have to, love something that ain't gonna be anything major. Telephone, telephone, telephone. Budgeted forty-four, fifty. Actual seventy-eight, eleven. Budgeted thirty-one, eighty, actual four thousand eighty-seven. Budgeted six, sixty, and we came in under at five, eighty-five.
Know you from three different locations. You know where they're at. Police department, CDO, and senior building. Senior building's gonna say that in the state law.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's also your internet and all that too, ain't it?
But I don't know how, I mean. Seventy-eight hundred dollars.
Stayed on internet a lot, didn't. They'll charge you a bunch of money.
Man, it's huge, those things.
I'm talking about different, I'm talking about different sides, you might.
Well, the. Oh, one should've been less than, I would think than the, than oh seven. Oh seven is your police department, cause they've got those next door radios on the phones too, not that, is that not following under those licenses? Or do they end up under oh one?
Let's take the century links on here too, so.
Yeah.
Uh.
I mean, you should look at it. It's getting late.
The AT&T, FirstNet.
Yeah.
We've got. That FirstNet is, may not be.
Today's the day.
Mm-hmm.
Still.
Yep. Two more hours.
That's right, and it'll be gone. We'll be on the six.
And it'll be up in four hours.
All right, Carla, just check on the phones and see what we got going on there.
Yeah, we.
We're so glad that, I'd say we set what we originally had set. Uh, transfer out memo. Eleven fifty is what we. Get paid by the water department, isn't it?
And the plan's sixty-five.
Bye. All right. Transfer to water, one ten.
Transfer to water. We don't normally do anything. Transfer to the water.
Receiver on them out. We did transfer, should, when we build a pool.
Man.
I got three DVD's so far, so.